Nor. I need a motion, first off, to go into closed session. If you'd like to make that statement then, I guess.
Why don't you make the motion to go in so that you, Ms. Wang, so you can be more descriptive?
Well, I'm not. Mr. Perkins, with all respect, I'd rather somebody here is more knowledgeable to do that, if that's okay. How about you? You're certified or supervising?
I've made them for the last. I'm happy to pass over to someone else.
What we want to do is just go into closed session?
Yes, we need a motion.
Make the motion, we go into closed session. Codes 2.2-3711A5, industrial business prospects, and A7 legal. I don't care if it hire lips ever boil in Texas.
I'll second.
There's a motion in a second.
But what are we supposed to say, legal pertaining to?
A7 is legal pertaining to pending litigation with school board and the county itself. And A5 is discussed expansion with no previous, no previous announcement being made.
Don't you, if you say school board and county, they could be still people sitting out here because we're not in closed session. You're talking about what you're going to be talking about, and they could be people sitting out here.
You know, you're not, under existing law, there is no precedent saying you have to name the case in which you are going in to discuss. I can only tell you that you have to recite the reasons for your entry and the substance of why you're entering the closed session. To discuss, you know, if you want to go so far again, that's the baseline. If this board, for whatever reason, decides that it wants to stand up and say, we're going in to discuss this case and this settlement offer, or whatever the case may be, you're at full liberty to do so. Now, I would submit to you, you are compromising your bargaining position in those issues.
But there's also no more confidentiality that we have to protect. Right. So, but I think in being, generally, we're not saying what lawsuit for the county or what lawsuit for the school system. And as I've looked at other boards in their minutes, they, they do that. They're a little bit more descriptive than we are.
Some are. Some do exactly as we've been doing. Some do something somewhere in between. It is, but there is no hard and fast rule that, that a court of appeal has put down across.
I'm not here to be contentious about it. I'm just here to make sure that our basis are covered and if you take your recommendations, although I know you're not going to be liable if there's a lawsuit, so I don't want to delay for this.
Well, just a suggestion, if, if he's given the information that is what legally we need to do, which is what the motion was, and the second, if you're not, if you would make the motion the way that you feel comfortable with, adding the amount that you want to add to it, then that's.
And that's my objective.
Okay. All right. I've got a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? No. I'll call the meeting back to order. First thing I'd like to say is welcome, everybody that's here. Ms. Porter, it's nice to see you back with us again. I'm glad to see you're back out. But welcome, everybody. And I've got Ms. Lisa Richardson is going to lead us with the invocation, and Danny Wilson will do the pledge. If we could start out with that, please.
I'd like to ask that everyone join me in saying the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. For you know that as our covenant is, we forgive those who trespass against us. We declare this law to the nation. The deliverer is he who will. And on his kingdom, power, and glory.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion for where we went into closed session, please. What we discussed in closed session.
Before we make a motion, I just, during open session going into closed session, there was a question on if we were clarifying the correct stuff and everything. If, was there any, any issues with what we identified as going in to discuss and what was actually discussed and the parameters of that?
Well, as I told the board before we went in, there's been some changes to the law. And the law now requires, and I'm going to read directly to you the changes, any member of the public body who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of clauses one and two, one and two being that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements are discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, shall in fact so state prior to taking the vote, indicating the substance of the departure that in his judgment has taken place. So what the law now requires is, is that if in fact any discussion was had that went beyond the scope of what the motion to enter closed session was for, then it requires and places an affirmative duty upon each board member to certify that and to state the reasons for the departure. And I do not know if the clerk would, would advise us what the motions to enter closed session were for specifically.
A5 was discussion of a business or industry expansion with previous announcement being made. And A7 legal was discussion with legal counsel staff pertaining to actual probable litigation, which included Smith County School Board handing.
So we need to certify that there was an attempt to discuss?
If there was anything discussed that went beyond those reasons, then you would have to so certify on the record as to what was discussed.
So the attempt to discuss the probable, or pending litigation with the library system, or not with the library system, but with the Supreme Court litigation that's ongoing. There was an attempt to discuss that.
So any, any member that's in agreement with that would, would need to so certify that on the record?
I'm waiting for a motion in a second to be able to move forward.
I'd just like to make the motion that we certified that there, there was discussion outside of the A7 legal parameters that went on to attempt a discussion of litigation that was not pertaining to the school board or the county.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Need a motion to adopt the agenda on the addition, the agenda and the additional agenda as presented?
I'll send a move.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Need a motion for the minutes of the previous meeting, July the 9th of 2019?
Send a move.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the minutes. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Financial status, Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, I have the board. You should have a packet in front of you again, as your own customer to it, should start out with a report that says revenue summary at the top of it. I'll briefly go through this to summarize. If you look at page two of that report, which is actually the front page you're looking at, Fund One is on the front page. At the bottom of Fund One, you'll see an adopted budget amount of revenue that includes all of those categories on the left. Total for that fund is $25,782,504. Your current amount is $663,504,81. That's also your year-to-date, and you have a remaining balance of $25,118,999,19 for that fund. The pages three, four, five, and six are the same numbers for the corresponding funds ending up on page six with Fund 760. Again, if you look at the columns associated, you have an adopted overall revenue budget, which includes all funds of $89,532,432. Your year-to-date collection of revenue, $6,213,119. There's a remaining balance of $83,319,321,81, or about 93% left to collect. The next report is the sister report, the revenue report. It's an expenditure report. The first page basically is a breakdown of all the departments that are included under Fund One. The columns indicated as you go across, you can see that we're in pretty good standing here in the first month and a half out. The totals of that report is actually on page two. You have to print it over on page two. But if you look on page two, at the very top, you'll see comprehensive service action right below it, it'll say fund total. Fund total for Fund, for Fund One is $25,888,786. Your year-to-date expenditure is $25,793,67. That leaves an unencumbered balance of $23,309,418,17, or 90% left within that Fund One. The remainder of pages two, three, four, and five are again the fund totals and the associated expenditures that accompany them. At the end of that report on page five, again, the budget amount of $89,532,432, for a total year-to-date of $5,143.62, with an unencumbered $84,389,431,38, or 94%. At this point in August, the revenue comparison from the summary report to the expenditure is the revenue exceeds the expenditure by $1,70,109.57. The next page is a single-page report, and it is basically an AP listing all the associated funds and departments from the current August 19 payables, the year ago August 18 payables, and the difference associated with those numbers. You can, you can go down through there and see the differences. You get to the very bottom, the payable was for August of 19, $891,287,85. The payable for August of 18 was $934,436,97, and we have a difference of $43,149,12, less in AP this year than we did last year. The next report again is a single page. It basically tracks position of the county all the way back to 2013, and the differences associated with that. As the months continue to build up and that report gets larger, you'll be able to see a lot better snapshot of that, if that's worth. The next report is straight from the Treasurer's Office. That's type of county expenses and appropriations. On your left, you have a 731/2018 snapshot, and on your right, you have a 731/2019 snapshot. And very quickly, as I go down those columns, your deposits in July of 18 were $5,892,216,23. In 19, they were $4,915,215,06. There are $977,001,17 less. Your expenses were $4,828,616. In 18 and 19, they were $4,306,553,17. So the expenses were down $522,469.99. Bring you to your subtotals. In 18, you had a subtotal of $5,768,679,50. In 19, you had a, you have a subtotal of $6,412,369,66. The difference in those subtotals is 19 is $643,760.16 more. When you factor in your unspent, in 18, you had $328,329,68 of unspent. In 19, you had $334,325,55 of unspent, which gets you to your balance. In, in 18, your balance was $5,442,798,22. Your balance this year is $6,780,4411. So you're $637,764.29 more this year. The remainings are some of the CDs that are not included. If you go down through those, you can, you can look to see what, what those amounts to. The second page of that report is basically an explanation of your unspent, which I identified on page one. It breaks it down for social services, school board, and general county. That's where the difference amounts to and comes off your total. The next page of that is your water and sewer and uncollected taxes portion. Again, snapshot of 18, snapshot of 19, depositing as those numbers continue to go down. If you'd like to go over those if you'd like. If not, we'll go straight to the Treasurer's Accountability Report, which is a detailed listing from the Treasurer's Office that identifies the funding and the amount of funds in each respective category. I certainly encourage you all to look over those. If you have any questions, I'll certainly do my best to answer it. If not, we can communicate with the Treasurer directly, and those reports come straight from him. As you are considering your appropriations, since I'm on your, on your agenda today, do you have sufficient time to consider all the appropriations, please?
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. Mr. Carter, the, the request from Sheriff's Department for the vehicles, is that number already been taken out of the activity fund, or it hasn't been taken out yet?
It's a, it's a split. There are, I think it's three and two, or four and one. So that will, that will be appro, if it's appropriated.
It's appropriated, but that's, so that number is prior to the?
And it will carry forward until those cars are actually paid for. So when you see your, to carry forward, if purchase of those cars haven't happened, your next report, your unspent appropriation, that will be higher as well.
Thank you.
This seems kind of odd as we're going through this, that we're 100%, 99% uncollected, and we've just started out all over again. So you're kind of looking to see those numbers dwindling down, and now we started them all back up again. I think I've got time. We'll go ahead and do the appropriations. General County Accounts Payable Listing of $891,287.85. Payroll, $717,064,112. Auto-Graffit Oil Development, $8,974. AEP Sentry Link Bills, $25,000. Sheriff's Department Cars, $128,773.80. County Administration Fund of $5,000, for a total of county appropriations plus carryover of $1,764,000.
Send a move.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Social Services, August 14th through August 31st of 2019, $350,000. September 1st through September 10th of 19, $60,000, for a total of Social Services of $410,000.
Send a move.
Second. Motion in two seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? School Operating Fund, Instruction, $725,000. Administration, Attendance and Health, $75,000. Transportation, $50,000. Facilities, $315,000. School Food Service, $75,000. Technology, $215,000, for a total School Operating Fund of $1455,000.
Send a move.
Second. Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Sheriff Fund 748 of $1,216.74.
Send a move.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Recovery Corp. Fund, 749, $37,782.82.
Send a move.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. It's 5:15, open citizens' time. No one has signed up to speak during citizens' time. Does anybody here wish to speak? I don't know that we're expecting much more crowd, but that's at 5:15, we're a little after, so should leave it going for a minute, or just I think we're good. Close session. If we stick, if we stick to our schedule, we'll do a couple of odd things before we get to our time schedules.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I'm fine with that, but Chairman from Ohio, if he wants to?
Right, I just didn't know if anybody else was coming at 5:30 to hear that presentation. It's kind of what I was, while I was kind of waiting just a second.
Get him back across 460.
Yeah. Well, Jeff's coming too, so he's on to.
Yeah, we can do a point.
Sure, we'll go to a committee meeting, kind of out of place. We'll go to the Appointment Committee on page 23 of your agenda.
Appointment Committee meeting on Tuesday, July 30th. I had several appointments to consider. The first was Mountain Camp. Mr. Ray had a conflict with his swift amendments that he attends. So this is just point of information, that Mr. Carter is going to send a, a letter to Mountain Camp and allow the committee to review at a future meeting. Got an EMS appointment for the EMS council. A motion was made to appoint Mr. David Haynes as representative for the Smith County on the Southwest Virginia Mercy Medical Services Council Board for a three-year term beginning August 1st, 2019, and ending July 31st, 2022. We appreciate Mr. Haynes volunteering to, to serve in that capacity, and that was a unanimous recommendation from the committee.
So it's a committee recommendation. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for the Mountain Camp thing. I, I have missed a few meetings. I don't say that I haven't. There is several scheduling conflicts. There's a couple of times that they, I sat there until seven o'clock waiting on them to call people to try to get a quorum. So their letter kind of portrayed that I was the reason that they weren't obtaining a quorum, but there's other members not participating other than me. But also, in understanding the importance of their need to operate while trying to mitigate the conflict, I did reach out to first a member in the community, Heather Lewis, who I don't know, most of you probably know from Department of Social Services at the county level, she's now at the state level, and she has agreed that if, if the board would so move to, to take up that appointment, I think there's a good tie-in there with Department of Social Services and, and what Mountain Camp tries to provide for, for the community. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Heather as, as the board appointee for the Mountain Camp Board.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
In a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
All right. Next, we had this in the county public library, and we had a recommendation, but in speaking with Mr. Pugh, Mr. Atkins, he's spoken with me and myself and Mr. Atkins, that he has some health issues, and so he has declined, and so we'll go back to the drawing board and hopefully have a recommendation for that one at the next Pugh. The additional appointments, after discussion, there was a motion to appoint Chris Brewer, an executive representative to Smith County Economic Development Authority, filling the remainder of Mr. Ray's term, which would expire June 30th, 2022. After discussion, this was a unanimous decision or recommendation.
It's a committee recommendation. Is there any further discussion?
Can we have a little quick description of Chris's background?
I can give you a brief rundown. He's a graduate of the University of Richmond, also has a master's degree from DePaul University, I believe, in Chicago. Spent some time in Chicago working for a couple of different mortgage banks and doing different, different functions there. He's now manager at Berry Home Centers in Chillicothe. And, you know, just his, he's got a master's in economics, so. Got a lovely bachelor's from Rafferty University. He's much more qualified than I am. Not to knock Rafferty University, but that's.
Mr. Brewer would be very good to share.
Absolutely. And, and just a little bit of history, there was no, there traditionally hasn't been a board member on the EDA. There was, and, you know, the EDA's got new leadership, new direction, and feel really good about what's going on there. And he's, you know, Chris is more than qualified and wanting to get put in and engaged, so I think it's a great opportunity to, to do that.
That was a committee recommendation.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Let me close the meeting.
Very good. Rick, would you like to do building grounds?
I can. I'll speak quickly. We had a building grounds meeting on Thursday, July 25th. First couple of things were just informational. We do have a deed for the Backwood Dragon for Mr. Staley, who has accepted and signed it, and that's actually on our agenda a little bit later.
It is.
We had discussion on updating, concerning an RFP for financing for the Boulder Insolid Waste Truck, which is, again, was informational purposes, and that's on our agenda for later in our meeting tonight. Then we had discussion about how some trees that appear to, are dead at the cornerstone building, concerned about the safety of the trees, et cetera. Letter that sent to the property owner, you know, that Mr. Carter contacted an arborist to come in and take a look at the trees, and everybody agreed the trees were, were dead and possibly closing the thread of falling on the building or sidewalks, et cetera. And so there was a motion made to request County Attorney Kevin Campbell to send the proper notification to the landowner concerning the trees and asking for them to be removed. And that was a committee recommendation, committee recommendation.
Any more discussion on the tree removal? All those in favor?
Then we had discussion on quotes, install proper heating and ventilation at the animal shelter. Listed in your, in your board minutes are costs of different pieces of equipment. That totaled $6,925.84, which would alleviate the issues at the animal shelter. Then there was a motion made to award the bid for the installation of that equipment to Mr. Mike Perkins, who's a master electrician, for the cost of $7,903.40, so that the recommendation to award the bid was a total of $14,909.24, and that would be for the equipment listed in the minutes. Electric unit heaters, keen electric units, variable speed shutter, honeywell floor lacing, dehumidifier, and have those installed. And that was a committee recommendation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
How many bids did we receive for, for the installation? How many bids did we receive for the installation?
Would you like to get that information prior?
Uh, no, I just wanted to make sure they're right.
They were serving.
Yeah.
Okay. That's a committee recommendation, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
And then the meeting was closed. Thank you.
I gave a little bit of time in case some other people wanted to come and hear you guys' presentation, but for board members that don't know and for the audience as well, I'd like to introduce Giles County Administrator, Chris McLarnie, and Mr. James Taylor. They're going to, Tyler, excuse me, they're going to give us a presentation on the focus project, and just for the board members, I, we've talked about this before, and I know Phil said I got a little long-winded at our last meeting talking about it, but, so here's the presentation, and I'll let you go, and then we'll finish up at the end of it. How's that? Welcome, and thank you for coming.
Yes, sir. Thanks for having me here today all this evening. Appreciate the work, Mr. Carter, got to meet a number of folks here. My son actually lives in Marion now, so it's a nice trip for us, brought our family down. We'll spend a little money here for you while we're here, while we're here, folks come back. I think tradition already has.
I was just going to interrupt you and say, that right there, my wife and I went and saw like three days after we were in Giles County visiting, and it's well worth the hike, so very nice. So welcome to Smith County.
Yes, sir, thank you. It's a beautiful place, appreciate what you're trying to do, and also certainly tell you that we understand we've been getting on where you are. We all have problems, we all have to deal with that. What I want to talk to you about today is a quick performance. All right, thank you. What I want to talk to you about today is a program, we call Focus. And Focus is really just a response by a network of people, service providers, volunteers, based organizations, to a series of problems that I have, you have, we all deal with in our communities. Drug addiction, poverty, child neglect, abuse, multi-generational dependence, government programming, inadequate housing, list goes on and on. And it's not just us, you know, the entire nation deals with these problems. When I was preparing to do this, I looked at Fairfax County, you know, 6.5% of people in Fairfax live in poverty. So the problems are everywhere, wealthiest county in America, and they have their issues as well. Usually what happens, those people don't want to talk about those problems, and they don't want to address them. And we try to do what we've done forever, and I've been involved by the government now in Giles County for 25 years, watched it year after year, we did the same thing, spent money, we provided funding to agencies, and it's really good to be one of those agencies, and they're doing great work. But I was a little disjointed, just didn't seem like there was any common cause, any common focus, or we didn't want to drill down into the root of the issues. And so, I'll be honest with you, this program, we looked for others, we just couldn't find anything. And I'm not going to tell you this evening that our program is the end-all, be-all, people still have problems, we still have problems, we're really just getting started in this program, but we can share some successes with you that we have had, and hopefully you can maybe maybe some of those, and I'm sure you can probably do a much better job with it than we have, but I think it really gets down to, we got to talk, we have to communicate. Service agencies, again, they do some incredible work, and I have a lot of respect for social services, that their jobs are comparable, their pay isn't adequate, same thing with the health department, they do some really tough work, and all the other service agencies, or community service, more really tough work. But they are set up not to really communicate well with one another, at least that's what we found in our region. And so this forces conversation to happen, and it forces conversation to happen around communities. So it's not just generalizations, we're drilling down into individuals, learning about families, where deficiencies are, and trying to figure out what those problems are, and then solve them with the resources we already have. One of the things that you'll notice, and one of the slides, is that we wanted to do this with existing services. We're spending enough money today on fixing these problems, I just don't think we're focusing our efforts in the right places. So again, communication and creating the network is probably the most important part of everything that we've done thus far. The first thing you have to do is assemble a team, and that's made up of a lot of different service providers, and I'll get into it in a moment, all the different agencies that we're working with currently. You got to identify areas, and this can be a tough one. You already have the data available to you, your GIS system, your 911, caller records, social services, the health department, all of the information that you need is already out there, but getting groups to share that and being comfortable in sharing that information. It took us a while to get our attorney to work with all these agencies and make them feel comfortable enough to be able to give us the information they need. It takes some time, but now that that information flows between agencies, they recognize that we're not going to take it and just hand it out. One of the things I will tell you, and our attorney, I'd be happy to speak with yours, Mr. Campbell, we probably talked about it at the end of the day, it's one of the things that came up when we spoke with County Marion, we're not sure once we have that data in our hands, is it not foible? At least our attorney feels like if the data is not foible when it comes from an agency, just because it comes to the county, it's put in a different format, does not mean that it is the end of it. So people may have different ideas about that, but until someone pushes that point, that's what we're going to work with. And then you got to get out and meet your community, you got to get out in the community. Really, if you sit down grassroots, figure out what the problems and the issues are, spend time there, and then try to pull all of your resources together. You know, if you look across your county, I'm sure you have issues everywhere. In fact, I read your GIS report here earlier today, and he was showing me some of them in Marion, and what I'm going to show you in a second, these dots just show up everywhere where they had calls, 911 calls for various things, there's problems all over the place. And when you look at that, you say, that's overwhelming. And I'm sure, I have lived here with the health department, and I'm sure she feels like, social services feels like, they're overwhelmed by these problems, and certainly they are understaffed, being underpaid, but I think the idea is to try to get these groups together. And I'm an old football guy, so I use an analogy related to football. We've got 22 different service agencies, and I said bring 22 stars together, they can be the best at their position. You put them on a football field together without practicing, and without communicating, without a coach, they're going to get beat. Mediocre teams will beat them. You got to play as a team, and that just doesn't really happen. So that's just an old football analogy there. Agencies that have come to the table, and you can read through those, law enforcement is critical, they've got to be a part of it. I spoke with your sheriff and appreciate, I was at a conference recently where he spoke, and certainly understand your issues, we have them and had them as well. Court system, health department, social services, workforce development, literacy volunteers, CHIPS, Virginia Tech, public works and maintenance, you say, what in the world do they have to do with this? We've done projects within these communities to try to prove the communities, fix infrastructure that was in bad shape. Public defenders are important in this building department, and you say, well, what does the building department have to do with this? If you go into an area with rental property, and you tell them you're going to start this focus project, the first thing they're going to think is, you're there to condemn all the buildings. Well, that doesn't help anyone, right? Some of them may need to be condemned, but you don't want people, put people on the street, you got to let them feel comfortable. If your building department can work with those owners, then you can work through those processes. So everyone has to be all in on this. Corporate extension has had extensive, has done extensive work in all these communities that we've worked with thus far, your regional foundation, and then your churches. And this is one where local governments kind of shy away sometimes. They are scared to talk about working with faith-based organizations. I can tell you that we are not, we've had no issues with that. At least in Giles County, and just riding around, same here, I assume, same here, at least in Giles, they are most organized and have more resources than any other volunteer group that we've worked with. And so, and in most cases, they are looking for projects, they want to do things they want to help, but they don't know where to help, they don't know how to help, and there's always liability issues. This helps, this program helps when you've got local government involved. As you probably know, local governments have a little more immunity than the average person walking down the street, and it gives them a better feel for being able to get involved and get their fingers dirty. Day report program, Corrigan, which is our hospital system, and obviously you already have the hospital system at the table, community services, charities, we have a number of charities that are involved, as I walk through down what we've done in our communities, over the ones that have been involved. School system's got to be involved, food providers, industry, I'll explain to you why industry's been involved and important in ours, we get through some additional slides. Our libraries, Commonwealth Attorney, CSA, housing organizations. That's a large group of people that you bring around the table. We meet once a month, we sit down, and we have serious discussions about parts of our community, and I'll tell you how we identify the parts. We took our GIS data and mapped the parameters that you see there for you. So basically, if you have an address, it's at your house, and there's been an animal call there, a soft call, rating, and any other things that you see, if there's been a DSS call, then you get a column, three-dimensional column in place of your house, and it has a height, and it has a color that corresponds with the type of call that was made. So when you see a lot of tall columns in an area, that means there's been a lot of calls to that address. That gives you something that graphically represents where problems and issues are. You've probably seen heat mapping for crimes and other things, this is similar to that, but it's a little better depiction, a little better representation of where problems and issues are. And what does that look like? Well, there's a map of our entire county, and you can see that sometimes those columns get really tall. You will learn a lot about your community when you start doing this. Some areas, Sheriff's Deputy here, I assume, and I bet he can tell you where a lot of calls go. Those guys are from ministries, so they know where there's issues. But sometimes you will find there's issues in places you didn't realize. Communities that on the outside may look great, housing may be good, but you'll find out that there's a lot of problems that are going on. What we found out when we did this mapping, and this is probably much interesting part of this, we talk about an overwhelming feeling, and it is certainly overwhelming in a lot of ways, but we found out that 1% of our addresses were generating 25% of what we call our reactive services. So 1%, 25%, and that's police, fire, EMS, court system, all those parameters that we mapped, 1% is utilizing 25% of services, 5% is utilizing 54%, and 10% is 70% of the total reactive services. So 10% of your population is causing a lot of problems, to be quite honest with you. Good way to put that. Once you have this information, though, see where these hot areas are, and then you decide, and that's a choice that you or those involved, the service agencies involved, have to decide, is the one you want to go into first, and you break it down, have you been able to one bite at a time, so you find the worst areas, you go into those areas, and you really attack those areas. And when I say that, we put up a map on the wall, and everyone can see, decide that map, an address. We know there's problems in that home, because we live there, we interviewed the folks in the house, we talked to the police, we talked to kids in the neighborhood, we figured out what's going on there. And when these service agencies sit down around a table, they bring out issues, maybe that their service agency can't deal with, but another one's table. Normally, that conversation does not take place, and a lot of times it has to do with the reason it can't take place, is because there are give or takes, and there's all kinds of issues to keep in front of, which is where the county comes in. County funds the majority of these organizations that we went over 100% today, with Sun and Way and Shake the Hall. So, you know, football analogy, somebody's got to be quarterback, that information can be shared with you, and you can share a portion of those, parts that are not maybe specific, but you can tell the health department, there's a need for you to be here in this community, there's a need for you to do, to have a clinic in this area. And maybe we don't get down to the specifics about individuals, but sharing this information back and forth, and again, you would be shocked how little of that happens currently. And we're talking about at the staff level, not just administrative level, but getting staff bits in each of these departments to talk to one another. So you're looking for social determinants of health, income, education, adequate housing, environment, security, and access to healthcare. Try to bring all of those things to these communities that are broken, and quite frankly, try to give them hope. I will tell you that I'm from an extremely conservative county. You hear a lot about a lot of programs, and some of your places are saying this, a lot of socialist stuff, and a lot of social programs, it's not at all what we're about. Our board supervisors made up, there's three contractors who work with their hands every day on that board, they believe in work, and everything we do is built around education and work, creating workforce. And every one of these programs I'm going to tell you about today really is to give people hope, and also put them back to being productive citizens, productive in your communities. So if you're in a focused community, what does it look like? What happens? First of all, you're going to see community cookouts or get-togethers where people are trying to get to know one another, and I will tell you that that is awkward in some communities. We have gone into two thus far, we're getting ready to start our third, and the first time you get together with folks and you tell them, I'm with the government, I'm here to help you, they do not want to hear that. They're going to see police, they're going to see other folks with you, social services are scared to death, I would become attached to my kids, but this allows them to interact with folks in a little different environment, allows you to get to know them. Immediately after that, we go into the community, we go door-to-door, we just knock on the door and say, we're here with Focus, and we want to help you, we want to know what your issues are, your concerns. And people will eventually start to open up in the door-to-door assessments. Increase presence of service providers. We want our service providers to spend a lot of time in these communities, as well as our police. We ask our police to go to a community policing model in these particular communities, so they spend time there, officers go through every day, they get to know kids, we have programs where the kids get to know the officers, and it's amazing how quickly the bad guys don't want to live there anymore. You should have an officer in your neighborhood every day, he's talking to kids, you know what, if you want to know what's going on in the community, just talk to the kids, they know what it is. The bad guys disappear. We've had some go in the jail, we've had some that just up and move. Food security efforts, we want to make sure kids in particular are fed. What you'll find in these communities, even though there's all kinds of programs out there to make sure people aren't hungry, there's a lot of kids who go hungry every day. And so these food security groups are right there in the community, finding out what the needs are, and they spend a lot of time and resources there to make sure these kids are fed. Little libraries, we've got a lot of literacy volunteers, and when they build these little libraries, they're maybe this big, they put books in on these communities, kids come out, they grab books out, if they bring them back, great, if they don't, that's okay too. We have principals who will go and sit in these communities, take a box of ice cream with them in the corner, and he'll sit down to start reading a book, and pretty soon the kids are gathered around, and they'll sit there, and they're learning, and they're getting to know these people, and they're getting to know principals someone they're going to see in school. After-school tutor, we've had a number of church groups, in particular last community we worked in, it was in a mobile home park, and there's a number of mobile homes in areas around this, and I'll be honest, it was a pretty rough shape, it was a rough area. One of the church groups there, Methodist Church, actually went in and rented one of the mobile homes, and a number of teachers in their congregation, they went in and started after-school activities in one of these mobile homes. It was a safe place for kids, it was somewhere they could learn, somewhere they got family or even. And from that, you know, kids start to figure it out, and I guess that's what we're going to try to provide, we're giving these kids opportunities, right? They see that there's a way out. They see the community policing, again, we have bicycle rodeos where we give away bikes, kids know how to add them, our police officers come in, talking about the courts and wear helmets. Health assessments, between the health and the screenings, and the on-site clinics, a number of things that have been wonderful to work with, in our Virginia Department, essential educational programming. They have a program with Virginia Tech, where once a month, we take a van in, we pick up kids out of these communities, we drive them to Virginia Tech, and there's a group of ambassadors there, students, who show these kids around Virginia Tech. They take them to ball games, they take them through engineering departments, they go through various departments, they see the labs, they get to learn things, they can be exposed to things they would have never been exposed to before in their life. And we'll tell you some really good, sort of success stories about that in just a moment. Day camps that we've had there, the churches come in, that will actually cut off a camp right there inside these communities. Summer lunch program every day, we drive a school bus through that community, federal grant, they'll pay for that, and offset their costs, they'll pick those kids up, we take them every day, they can eat lunch after school, and we also do some educational programming while we're there. Do some landscaping improvements, and I'll show you a few projects that we've done along with playgrounds, had job fairs there, taking people to job fairs, so those are the things that the people in a focused community see. And it doesn't take long when these things are happening to change people's personalities. And it doesn't take long, when these things are happening, to change people's personalities and attitudes about coming to the door and talking to people. Some of the programming that helps back this program up, I mean, if you go to Michigan, thank you guys, please, and oh, here's a socialist pitch, but I assure you it's not. Community Services Work Program, we have ACE program, we'll give you that at the bottom of the page here, it's called Access to Community College Education. And any student graduates with a 2.5 GPA from Child County Schools can go to our community college for no college for three years. It's a wonderful program. It gives all these kids in these focused communities, as well as every kid in the county, an opportunity, there's hope there, they can go to school for two years, it doesn't cost me a whole lot of books, and we even have some very generous donors who will take care of the books if they can. Our board supervisors funds half of the cost, especially for the less than half, about $75,000 a year, and then we raise the other half. September 21st, we got any mud runners here, we have a mud run every fall called the Money Ace Race, and we generated about $125,000, $150,000 a year in one week. And I can tell you, we're a small place, we don't have near the resources that you have here. We talked about ACE, in order to follow ourselves, to get involved, to be part of the businesses, really the private donors, we have raised in four years, $927,000 in private money, and that's in place of 17,000 people. It's a great program, but getting back to the volunteer hours, every student that's in that program has to give 100 hours per year of volunteer services. And so, they, a lot of their time is spent in these focused communities, those volunteer efforts, and then also the community services. If you're sentenced to community services, we manage that internally rather than letting an outside agency do it. Favor Boarding Program, that's basically for nonviolent offenders, and it's worked well for us. Somebody may even have, you have a Favor Board program yet?
Not yet.
You've got Drug Board, right? They're not Favor Board yet? Okay. That's worked well for us. We've got a TANAS Work Program, and that is other programs for social services, but if you're going to receive TANAS benefits, if you're eligible, you have to work for them. Thus far, that program's been 100% successful. People have either gotten a job, or they've been sanctioned, gotten off of TANAS. So it's been a great program. Requires some time, it's not easy initially, but it ended up working out well for us. I have inmate work program, probably work your inmates lonely, and we use them a lot for labor for some of these products that we do. We have a summer youth work program, and particularly, these kids that are in these focused communities are eligible for this along with any child in the community. But if they're 16 years of age, we've got 92 businesses that are willing to work with us. County or our Industrial Development Authority, or it's your EDA, the equivalent, would pay for them, half of their salary, half of minimum wage, for a six-week period, and then the business that they work within pays the other half. We have great success with that. Unless these kids do anything, these multi-generational families who depend on veteran state assistance, to find out what work is, to see what that is to get them, we provide transportation if they don't have it. And in all this, within existing services, there's, we have one person who is a part-time individual, he works part of his day writing grants for us, the other time he helps organize these programs. So you're not talking about needing a lot of extra staff to do this, or a lot of additional costs. And some pre-day education, most of you are probably aware of this, some may not be, and it certainly is for me, I've been in this for a long time, but by age five, child's brain development is at 90% of what it's ever going to be. Those first five years for these kids that grow up in these households that are just a mess, with no real family structure, you have gotten, you're going to have your hands full, if the school system was here today, I'm sure they would tell you the same thing. It's hard to get those kids brought up to speed before they get third, fourth, fifth grade, and typically, when they fall behind initially, they're behind for the rest of their life. And the statistics on that are unbelievable. Never seen them, I would urge you to look into that a little bit, what happens to those kids later in life, not always, but a lot of times, it's really, it's sad. So what has happened? How do you measure success? These are mapping results from a community that we worked in. This was 2014, when we mapped the parameters that I mentioned earlier, and that is 2018. So go back, that's 14, and that's 18. So you can say, "Well, the economy got better," and it did. You can say, "Well, some drug dealers moved out," and they did. There are more people living there now than there were then, but the success has been tremendous. The kids are different, they're smiling when we drive through there. And when we first pulled into those communities, it was safe, I go to the houses, people were white, we pull in now, they don't care, if they come running, they want to talk to you, want to tell you what's going on in their lives. To move to the second community that we did, there's the mapping results 2014, and there's 2018. We have seen, depending on which categories you want to look at, crime statistics have gone down, in some cases 40% to as much as 70% over that four-year period. So tremendous impact in the communities where we've actually been there, getting ready to start a third one. It's a great story to tell, this is young Emily, I won't say her last name, although she gave me permission to do this. She was in our first focused community. When we went around and did interviews, myself and another gentleman at the door, getting to know these things, I was quite frankly, we didn't know if this thing was going to work or not, and we just were kind of winging it, so we were all involved, you know, we had books from the granola lab. And this young lady happened to be in one of those houses, and we asked her, "What do you want to do with your life?" Got a set of questions that we asked. And she said, "I'm interested in my herbology." That is not what I expected to hear from her. But we figured that out, she decided she wanted to come to work in our summer youth work program. We made contacts at Virginia Tech, and it was a lady there, a professor who was actually at the time working on a Zika virus. She said, "I've got room for in my lab, she can come there and work." And so, we said, "Okay, that's great." She met with her the first time, and she knew transportation was going to be a problem. So this professor allowed her to work and live with her for six weeks. So she worked in her labs, lived there six weeks, left, this professor took an interest in her, she got a full ride at Virginia Tech. Now, that's her Virginia Tech lab right now, you're right, she's a junior now, and she is doing some great stuff. So that's a success story, and I can tell you at least four more kids who have gone from Virginia Tech out of these communities that would not have known that was ever possible before. There was just no chance they would make it. This is an area where we just recently did some work, there is before, and here we are building a playground. We had $25,000 donated, there was a number of sources. That, when I mentioned earlier about industry helping, the pictures you see there, it's selling aid, they send their employees out, and they work with the city, they're very skilled individuals, they do a great job to help us on our Money Ace course. They helped us build this playground, and that's what it looks like today. So it went from some abandoned buildings, an absolute mess, to something that community could be proud of. Again, this program's not, and they'll be all that we know that, but it is at least where we're doing, having an impact in the communities. And I would encourage you to try. We've done the same thing, 1935 is when welfare started in this country, and we have been doing the same thing for a long time, and really just didn't see the difference. We've seen a reduction in our regional jail costs, we've seen a reduction in obviously a number of inmates. We still have our problems, no question about it, but at least things are starting to stabilize. Our CSA cases are starting to stabilize before, you know what the crash looked like, it just seemed like, court cases go up, everything goes up. Is it all a result of this? Absolutely not. But the economy's gotten better, and certainly that drives a lot of it, but I also like to think we've had some good success stories. Working with churches in your community, there is opportunity there to have an impact like any other. We lead those communities with our government employees, when the county is no longer involved, churches are still there, there's still operating programs, we're getting ready to move for our third one, and churches will continue to be there. So you've got to have all aspects of your community involved. And these are the real beneficiaries. Those kids were helping us build the playground, and those kids live a pretty rough life, and I can tell you, they're pretty happy about having a playground in their backyard now. That's all I have for you, young lady. Go ahead, try to answer any questions that you have, and whatever we can do to help you, alcohol-free considering, it does require effort and time, but no doubt you've got the right people, just from the folks that I've had, the right people to help like this out.
Chris, I think it's, and I know I won't speak for the board, but there's a lot of digestion to be done, and there was for me, and that's the second time I've got to hear this presentation, and I was really anxious for you to be able to tell the full board the same stories. And we've been muddling in the water, and we've been mapping, and you've talked to Manuel today, and we've been trying to make some contacts to see where we, you know, on that end of things, where we need to go. But I applaud y'all's efforts to make a difference, and just to stand up to make a difference. I applaud that. And I, I know Mr. Tyler's going to speak here in a minute too, and, you know, there are sometimes we think, "Well, man, how am I going to do that?" You know, but there's organizations that are, kind of what had led us into was, we need to start out with information first. If we can gather information, then, so, you know, that's, like I said, everybody will kind of digest what went on here today, but I applaud you guys, and I think it's a real cool thing to be doing, so.
I appreciate that. I would say that there are dedicated people in these service agencies.
Oh, yeah.
Who are killing themselves every day, and feel like nobody pays attention to them.
Yeah.
Truthfully, we did. Until this, I paid no attention with social services, indeed. I get a report from them once a month, once a year I go down and go in with the regional director, and, okay, that's social services, move on. You don't see what those people really do, and they kind of work in whatever it takes every day, help part of the same thing. Those people are in the middle of it. And when they see a county get involved, you know, they energize, and there is a huge group of volunteers out there, these churches, I'm telling you, they're looking for projects. Most of them are just sitting there waiting, they just need someone to help with the lead.
Well, I know you had said, kind of, that being able to know what those groups do, a lot of them are redundant. I mean, they're both, and not accomplishing the thing. So I think putting everybody at the table, like you had discussed earlier, I think that really opened everybody's eyes of, okay, now let's focus it this way. If you're doing it, and I'm doing it, let's, I just...
There are state agencies that duplicate services over and over and over again. And they sit down at the table, and they had no idea.
Sure.
What they were doing.
Right.
A great example, we had a discussion about car seats. This is the level of detail we get down to in these communities. It was a mother who had moved in, she had three kids, she was working, single mother, she needed car seats. And one of the agencies said, "Oh, yeah, we provide those, I can take care of it." I mean, in five minutes, when we bring up a name, it's taken care of. Somebody has it. There were three agencies in that room that provided car seats, and none of them knew the other did that. And that's just one of the hundreds where we have figured out that there are redundant services. You will be amazed when you get everyone in the room.
I think, I think a biggie too is for the community to not be ashamed of what's going on in the community. And I got to make this statement with Mr. Graham even earlier today, you know, I've, different things that you guys have brought before, is about opioid dependencies and companies, and if, you know, the, what time frame did I get to be on this board? I have several years, but is, you know, if you can do anything in that direction, man, I'm behind it, because it's one of those things that affects the entire community. And I know we can't wave the wand and it all fixes, but I applaud you for your efforts in what you're doing. And Mr. Tyler, you can probably help us out there just a little. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, thank you.
I would just like to make a comment. That is one of the most impressive presentations I've seen.
It's inspirational, I mean, this makes me feel good.
And I applaud how you comprise this program. There's so many successes available through that, and the synergy of all these community people working together. So is there a handout for this? Because I would love to, there's not.
Not really, but we can make one.
I would love to have.
I'd be glad to give you the presentation. We're a very small community.
Well, you're to be applauded, is that chairman's idea?
But we have some wonderful staff, who cares?
It's very impressive.
And I know we have to thank you, I just, a few conversations that I've had, it's lovely.
I would love to see it for us, yeah. Thank you so much.
Okay, Miss Ragan.
Do you have a strong individual, a strong volunteer, a strong employee with one of these organizations that more or less oversees and ties it together, or, somebody's got to be grand-rotting this thing. Is that your, is that what you're doing?
It's a combination of people. I'm in those meetings, and so, try to keep things correct. You know, I'm not going to tell you it's going to be easy when you first start. Some of these service agencies, there's probably some presenting films over the years, probably rightfully so, we haven't paid a lot of attention to them. That's why the county's got to be involved, because I know there's a study going on right now, Virginia Tech's doing, regarding this program, that we want to see what success we've had, try to explain and understand it. And they asked a few service agencies, you know, it seems like, "What did you think about?" And they said, "Well, we kind of felt like we were strong-armed in the beginning." They're absolutely strong-armed, I mean, that was, you got to push. And really, the only organization that has the teeth to make that happen is you. You're the only one that funds all those groups and can make it happen. So we've got one gentleman, again, he's a grant writer, he's retired sheriff's deputy, he does a great job, he helps to organize things. This Thursday, we've got a Thrillington Club and Rotary Club that are coming together to landscape that playground, and they're just organizing things like that. But every member of our staff is involved in this in some way, from the building department, they are, and they know that that's the central theme, and that's what we want to see happen from the board level all the way to the bottom, so it kind of takes care of itself.
Thank you. Yes.
First of all, I had the privilege of working with Chris for about 10 years while I was CEO of Prilling House Community Hospital in Giles County. He was instrumental in us building Brandon Hospital. I'm glad that my name was on that building. I was CEO at that time. The thing that I think, if you go back and remember the map of Giles County, New River cuts Giles County in half. At night, there are two deputies, one's on one side of the river, one's on the other side. They have 17,000 people. But what they have done is that they have been able to focus their resources. Where focus is very good, because that is exactly what they've done. Not trying to solve any problems, focused in what they've done. The other thing that I would like to call attention to was the list of all the agencies. With the consortium that we developed here in Smith County, that received the grant for the opioid program, that grant for 750,000, almost all of those agencies are there. The infrastructure is here, the churches, the ministerial associations, all of those are part of this. The health department, sheriff's department, police department, mayor, all of them are a part of this. And so, what Chris said, it took a while to get all these folks together, and giving you folks to the table, the table is here. That's the thought that I want to throw down for you. The table is here, the resources are there. Chris, by training, is an engineer, and if he can't figure it out, he's very data-driven. The data is here, as well. Daniel Street does it, Mr. Carter does it. And so, the only thing that I would like to add is, from the perspective of the hospital, we put together a consortium, it is working, we're doing some really good things, of which you'll hear about, you're going to read that, but I'm ready to take this to another level, and to be able to focus the resources. Sheriff Schuler had been in Giles County, Chief John Claire had been in Giles County, Manuel was there, Mr. Bishop was there, John Graham was there, several other people were there. I would like to close by saying what Sheriff Morgan Will Iron said when we went. He said, "Chris first told me about this, I wasn't too much into it. I've known Morgan for years, and I can say, yeah, I could probably see where Morgan wouldn't be into it, but he's a leader. They still hope. There's hope, Christ, there's hope. We're here, we're ready."
Thank you very much. We've got communications with you guys, and we'll keep those open, and, Mr. Carter, you want to say anything with the mapping into things, kind of how, kind of what we've been playing with, or?
Sure. After, after our visit to Giles County, and learning what we did, and having the ability to interact, we came home and we tried to, you know, through decayed some of these, and, you know, this is the first time since... know, this is the first time since the presentation I've been able to see that these breakdown calls. You know, we've got a CAT system that has hundreds of calls that go into that. So having that to be able to detail that down further is a big plus. So now that we've got that that footprint, it kinda narrows down the resources as well. So we've already communicated one of the big hurdles, one of the first partners, I guess, that I would call and trying to put all this together is is Department of Social Services. And I don't know how it was in Giles County, but I can share with you that Chris Austin here, we had several discussions. And in leaving those discussions, he is on board with it now. And whatever the hurdles are that exist with the data being collected and the information that's shared, unless Mr. Campbell says this, there we're gonna get kinda like what Giles still, we're gonna we're not gonna worry about it until we're worried about it. The cooperation is built and that that's what I see is is trying to get these outside agencies one by one to to accept, to come on board and to be a member of the team. As Mr. Tyler indicated, I've had the privilege of going to some of those consortium meetings as well. And they are there. There are a lot of the team members right there. So each time that I go, he's courteous enough, he'll give me something to eat and he'll ask me to speak for a few minutes. So it's pretty far a walk. I can go out there and get something to eat and talk a little bit. But I think it's a positive thing. What what my goal is is to get, you know, first and foremost, the data to where we can condense it and identify it correctly, slowly bring in these supporting team members and then ultimately come back and we have a larger discussion about it once we get to that board.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you guys for sharing. Thanks for coming. Enjoy your stay here. Yeah, there you go. There you go. Thank you very much. Dr. Karen Shelton, I've got you next on the agenda for six o'clock if you're ready.
All right.
Well, welcome and come aboard.
I just wanted to give you an update on the comprehensive harm reduction program. We got this time last year and maybe for this discussion as far as addressing some of the problems, again, part of the people are showing their power now with the other community leaders, but we can't forever hold the problems that have been being worked in front of us. And so how to deal with youth and how to do obesity. And we focused on substance use, one of the comprehensive harm reduction programs. So you voted that we could go forward with this and so we started our program in December, had our first participants in January and you can see there from there we've grown about a few every week. But just wanted to let you know a little bit about how the program is developing. Smith County Comprehensive Harm Reduction Program provides many essential services to those with substance use disorder in our community. People come into our program to get sterile needles in exchange for new ones they bring in. But they leave with the new needles, but they leave with many other things as well. They leave having talked to someone about their addiction. They are tested for hepatitis C. We've found about 25% of our participants are positive for hepatitis C. They are referred to treatment for hepatitis C. One is completely cured from their hepatitis C. They are being tested for HIV. They are being instructed on how to safely use needles so that we can reduce some of the harms that they associate with disease infections. The study highlights on the skin, the accesses and the very costly bacterial undercarditis, which can put them in the hospital for a couple weeks of vitamin D so we can reduce those harms of proper education. We also refer them for birth control in our health department and so we can decrease the number of infants that we have that are born. We discuss this exposure and with NAF as well. And so they're able to be properly trained for their newborns. We're also able to refer them into Medicaid and refer them into medical services as well as behavioral health services. And we're able to let them know of food resources and other social supports. We now have a peer recovery specialist on our staff in our comprehensive harm reduction program. And this is a person who has lived experience with addiction but who has been in long-term recovery. And so by someone talking to them, who knows where they are and can lead them where they are, they have someone that can see you've become a productive citizen, a mentor, a hope that they can get there themselves. So when they come in to get this for me, they can leave with a little bit of hope and I think it's so good and I know without hope and the things that we can do with that. They have had someone that's cared enough, spent a little time with them and to lead them where they are. They have hope for a better job. They have hope for a better education. And they hope have hope to be better parents to their children than their parents were to them. These are three common things that we've already expressed from them as they come in. And we do appreciate you and your support to the board supervisors for this program as well as our sheriff and our community partners here that have allowed us to bring this resource to our community. And we do feel it is providing very critical resources for this community. You can see from the sheet that we are up to 45 participants now. Eighty-nine percent of them are Smith County residents. We've had a few from outside of Smith County, but the vast majority are from right here in Smith County. Seventeen percent are homeless. Twenty-six are actually, percent of them are actually employed. Some have insurance, some do not. We help refer them. As you know, from substances in the community, we can see the different resources we have here. But we've been able to run hepatitis C vaccinations, hepatitis A vaccinations, revive trainings for them. So we really have been able to bring very specific services to the people in the community. Any questions coming about the program?
Anybody?
No, once again, I would just like to say that's commendable to get the faith that this is positive movement.
Then for many, all the community, you know, resources kind of participated with is the hospital programs, who's already took EpiNAT, you know, the drug courts, the middle health services, the medical services, there's been a real few.
It takes a team.
But it really is a team.
That's true.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And I know here at the beginning of school year, a lot of school systems have been giving presentations and and some of the schools, I've been having some of the deputies coming in and giving some some statistics and discussing those issues. So we appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks for taking time to come down. Thank you. Taking a five-minute break or is anybody good? Keep going. Huh? All right. Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come back and we'll we'll still be pretty close on time. So I guess you're in Rowland's place tonight or?
I'm probably in the house.
We've got a last a little more than five minutes, but if you'd like to come present, please, I'm from Davenport and Company presentation on financing for the boiler system and solid waste truck. Sixteen, seventeen on our agenda.
How are you all doing this evening?
Very well, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Of course, I'm not Rowland. I'm RT Taylor. I work with the local and state for this one mini engagement. I'm here this evening to discuss the limit, I think that was included in the book that I had extra handouts with somebody.
We've got him. Mr. Taylor.
All right. Give you a quick overview of the process. We distributed the mission to staff and then talked through some of the results from the bank RFP process with you and then ultimately go down to the recommendation that is based on conversations with bond council, staff, as well as the budget finance committee on which option that would be recommended to you this evening. So first and foremost, a little bit of the background, we did coordinate the staff to issue a bank request for proposals and we distributed that RFP to a database that we made between upwards of 100 financing institutions locally, regionally, and nationally. And we did receive eight proposals back and those are listed in the middle of the first page of the memo. You can see that in both the 10-year and 12-year amortizations that we asked for, key government finance provided the lowest interest rate on a tax exempted actual basis. And what we've determined is that in this particular case, the tax exempt financing would be more cost beneficial. That's not always the case, depends on the cost differential, the things that are required under a tax exemption agency versus a basketball, which is why we went off the RFP asking for those options. And what you'll find in the attachments here too, there's an analysis, a little bit more detailed numbers analysis that reflects and supports the recommendation that we're giving. But you can look very at the very bottom of the page of page one, and you can see that again, key government finance provided the lowest interest rate over either a 10 or 12-year amortization. Believe budget finance committee recommends a 12-year amortization based on the budget, what's available in the budget. Right now, the interest rate is fixed and will be held firm through closing as long as we get back to the bank tomorrow sometime and let them know that this is the way the county wants to proceed. Okay. I guess at this point, I would open up for any questions, given that recommendation of the 12-years amortization with key government finance. See if they'll have any questions. I'll get right to that.
Any questions? Okay. I'm sorry. Got lost in my pages there. Do we need to um?
It's not in relation to the recommendations. I just want to clarify, if if the boiler does, if the boiler and the roll-off truck don't, I'm asked to the toll seller, we we do have the flexibility of of another piece of equipment purchased. Is that correct?
Are you asking, is the language built into the financing documents to allow that flexibility to be spent toward other projects? That's something that I think that bond council will have to ultimately determine. But I believe they had specifically said these are the components that are going to be. I think I think the cost that we've identified under this financing is specific to the best estimates we have right now for the solid waste truck.
Well, it was a committee recommendation to go with the key bank. I guess that's what we're waiting on now as to. Is there any more discussion on that?
Mr. Quick question. Instead of talking about a bond, as I was expecting, we're talking about a lease purchase or lease financing. Why is is it a different vehicle we've decided to go with or?
The legal structure of the financing is just slightly different, if you will. It's set up to have, it's essentially a bank loan, just like it would be whether we call it a bond or a lease. It just has to do with the legal terms and conditions that are expressed in the financing documents.
Well, if we'd have just gone down here to the local bank and said we want to borrow 700,000 to borrow to buy a boiler, could we not have got, the rate would've been somewhere in the ballpark, but we wouldn't have nearly issued the cost with what's it called?
Well, I don't know if it necessarily be in the same ballpark to clarify that. I think there's a couple of different variables that go into how the banks, being it's really Davenport in particular, our bank, RFP process. They they even the, that's why we incorporate the local and the regional and national banks in the process so that when we reach out to them, we see, do you have any questions? Do you plan to propose? They understand that they're in competition with one another and that we run a very clean bank RFP process. So I think, for example, not to pick on anyone in particular, but we've got a couple banks like People's Bank that has a taxes and rate of 4.4% on the 10-year option. That's pretty high with respect to the other bids that we got in, for example. So it's not necessarily a given if one bank knows that you're coming directly to them, that you necessarily get a commensurate rate. Does that make sense?
If you went out to borrow this amount of money without an RFP of this nature from council, it's probably gonna drop questions from the institutions and and risk-based pricing on this. It's probably gonna price you all out of the ballpark would be my guess.
You just don't, you don't. Right, right. And that's that's the upshot. But we do know that when we go through our RFP process and reach out to the banks, we answer questions about the county's finances when they start digging in for their credit write-ups. We have those clarification conversations. Well, you know, is anybody else bidding? Well, we don't know exactly who, but we've got several banks interested and we, right now, we have, you know, five or 10 banks planning to respond. So it it sort of keeps them in a mode where they're gonna really sharpen their pencil. So that's that's part of the part of the process there.
Mr. Chairman, this might be a sensitive question, but how much did we pay to have your expertise in compiling this?
Well, number one, that's all factored into the analysis. If you want to look at page, see attachment two. And it's not just our costs that are all linked together here, but you've got the legal council, bond council, you've got potential bank fees that are assessed in there as well as our fees. That's on the cost of issuance line out the middle of the page, uses. So our fees.
Okay, I'm sorry.
My Woods fee, I'm sorry. If you look at cost of issuance line item under uses, if you look on the left-hand side of the first column.
Which page do you think it's in?
You're on page 29, Judy, in your book.
Attachment two of our.
Right here.
Yes, ma'am. So uses and the cost of issuance. And we're looking at the tax exempt option here.
We just.
So how many?
It's part of that.
Your recommendation.
I haven't been fine tuned like that to. Right.
Right.
Right. So I'm on that.
You're good.
To Mr. Ray's point earlier, do we have to borrow up to the 917 if by the time we fine tune and we're closing the financing, if there's numbers that we're willing to borrow up to?
Going down there.
That's why your resolution is to give the $917,000.
Well, it's a pleasure of the board. There's, I guess, the resolution on page 16 is what that what I'm a little bit confused on is I know in our, on page 25 of our of a budget committee, which is where the the copy of the RFP is received. So do we need to take action there? Does that counteract anything we're doing now or?
The recommendation from the budget committee is just that. The resolution is the dice and legal document that need to put the wheels in motion. So for example, you're the attorney, but I would I would think the consideration of the committee recommendation would be first followed up by consideration of the resolution authorized.
Couldn't have said any better. Well, then we'll need to go to.
You can go down here and say it.
Yeah, to get that worked out, then we'll need to go to page 25, which is a committee meeting that we had where the RFP was received for financing needing for the boiler system. And to purchase the truck for the solid waste department, a copy of the RFP is attached showing a summary of interest rates, recommendation from Davenport Company after discussion. Then it was motioned and unanimously carried to be a committee recommendation. So that's where we need to start. Is that correct? Well, that is a committee recommendation. So is there any more discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, then we go to page 16 for the resolution itself. So we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve as presented.
There's a motion and a second to approve as presented. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much.
You got off easy. You got off easy today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Since you've got your hand on the budget committee...
All right.
You want to go ahead?
Yep. We'll take care of that one. Then, uh, we were also presented with an engagement letter from Hickok Brown and Company for pre-audit services for tw- uh, twenty nineteen. This time services are anticipated to be approximately twenty thousand dollars for Smith County and thirty-five hundred dollars for the Smith County EDA. It was a motion in the past that, um, to accept the engagement letter as presented from Hickok Brown and Company for the pre-audit services. That is a committee recommendation. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Once again, we did get competitive bidding, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I couldn't tell you the amount necessarily?
No, I think on that one, it's a continued violation if you're here to do.
But, but then there's an RFP put out every, so, I mean, that's for the pre-audits. Then they submit, do some metals to do that, and then, then it's like a contractual thing that you can, uh...
There was the ability to renew year after year.
Right.
So making sense of years.
That's what I was getting at.
Mr. Campbell, I, I would ask, I also think that under professional services, there's a, an amount, a dollar amount, that also plays into the carrying as well, if I'm correct.
A little negotiation.
Less than fifty, is that?
I think it's, I think it's less than fifty on professional.
Yeah. I can look it up, but I'm almost certain it's less than fifty.
Sorry, I don't mean to put you on.
I figured he'd use that off the top of his head.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor? Then there was a presentation from the, to amend the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget to allow the Smith County School Board to utilize carryover funds as a result of the school board receiving additional state tax and forestry service funds at the end of eighteen nineteen in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. And then there was a carryover fund from the county of fifty-four thousand seven dollars for a total of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars. Their request, the school board is requesting to utilize the funds in the twenty nineteen budget, uh, and it will change the current twenty nineteen, twenty budget from eighty-nine million five hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred thirty-two to eighty-nine million seven twenty-two, two eighty-nine. Where that will change will be on the revenue side, one hundred and six thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars for, um, does it need to go over the line items? Or the line numbers?
On the road.
Um, from state tax relief, twenty-nine thousand ninety-two dollars for basic aid, fifty-four thousand seven dollars for local, in local funds. On the expense side, one hundred and twenty thousand ten dollars in instruction, six thousand one hundred and twenty in administration, five thousand seven hundred and sixty in transportation, fifty-four thousand nine hundred and seven in maintenance, three thousand sixty in technology. That is, uh, there was a motion made and approved by the, to amend the budget as requested by the Smith County School Board, and that is a committee recommendation, passed unanimously.
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know that it's necessary, but just in disclosure purposes, I, because it is amending the actual school board budget that we voted on, I would just like to disclose that I do have, uh, I, Curtis Ray, declare that I have an immediate family member who's employed by and receives annual salary from the Smith County School Board. However, despite my disclosure of this fact, and while I may have a personal interest in a transaction, I believe my judgment is not impaired and I can render a fair and impartial decision and vote on this matter.
Uh, go ahead. Well, we're going down the line. I'll read mine as well. I'll, Todd Dishner, declare that I have an immediate family member who is employed by and receives an annual salary from the Smith County School System. However, despite my disclosure of this fact, and while I may have a personal interest in the transaction, I believe my judgment is not impaired and I can render a fair and impartial decision and vote on this matter.
I read Blevins. I declare that I have an immediate family member and I as well, uh, employed, uh, the Smith County School System and receiving annual salary from such. However, despite my disclosure of this fact, and while I have a personal interest in the transaction, I believe my judgment is right here and I can render a fair and impartial decision and vote on the matter. And I also have a copy of my COI advisory opinion from, come up, three, destroy, yes, if anybody wishes to see.
So we are pro-education, this board. So that, um, after that, that is a committee recommendation and we've made our declarations. So is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Oh, Mr. Richardson was going to be here, so can I leave the PPTRA out until he comes? I want to do that.
He has another item also.
Yeah, and, and I saw him earlier today and asked him if he would discuss the PPTRA with us. So, uh, back to the budget committee, that Mr. Carter presented a request received by Mr. Schuler, Sheriff Schuler, to place five Dodge police cars on the order before August eighth of twenty nineteen. That is a committee recommendation as well. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? There's also a request from District Three for renewal for the White Top Radio Lease Agreement, which is in our packet, um, at the same rate of four hundred dollars a year. The committee met and discussed that situation and came out of the committee with the unanimous recommendation. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Man, I got through budget almost. Ms. Lavanda Bricky, front center, please. Glad you're here with us tonight.
Thank you. I am Lavanda Bricky from the Smith County Health Department, and I'm here again this year to ask for advertisement money for the rabies clinic. And the amount is fifty dollars two times from Trade Times and then a hundred and sixty dollars for Smith County News for four rent times in four weeks with two thousand online digital ads for a total of a hundred and sixty. And with the hundred from the Trade Times, it would be two hundred and sixty dollars.
It's the pleasure of the board.
Why would we not?
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you for coming. Sorry you had to wait so long, but you hopefully learned some stuff tonight.
I did. It's a lot of magic to stand.
Um, I don't know when Mr. Richardson's coming.
Chairman, I think around seven o'clock.
Okay. Ms. Wyatt, would you like to take the ordinance committee?
Sure. Um, I'll do the first part, and then I think Mr. Campbell's going to kind of advertise on the other part. Okay, the ordinance committee met on Wednesday, July the thirty-first at four P M. And one of the things for consideration was, um, this penalty for overdue taxes. And we had Mr. Tom Burke at the Treasury in attendance to explain the policy for that. It was communicated that during the public hearing to the present ordinance, they would allow twenty cent, twenty percent to be added to an individual's delinquent personal property bill to allow for offsetting the costs that are associated with the administrative collection agency and attorney's fees that are accumulated due to trying to collect the delinquent bill. Mr. Burke had explained for such fees to be applied in the collection process, and ordinance identifying the ability to collect such fee must be passed by the local governing body. Board members were concerned with the timeframe in which the fees were being applied to delinquent bills. And Mr. Burke had explained the fees would likely be added to delinquent bills older than four years. And the Treasurer's Office will be as uniform as possible when adding the fees to the tax bill. After discussion, it was approved unanimously by the board to adopt as ordinance is presented during the public hearing, to recommend it. And then, as far as the noise ordinance, there's quite a discussion on that. And Mr. Campbell talked with the ordinance committee in the past, and importantly, following the flag into that, and I think he's going to explain that in more detail.
Okay, let's go back to the first one, and if we got committee recommendation to set the public hearing.
No, we were ahead of public hearing.
They recommended adopting the ordinance as, as presented during the public hearing. That's a committee recommendation. So is there any more discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we had sent this back for some more specifics, uh, 'cause there was concern about, you know, the number of years or how far back it would be done and that there would be a consistency on applying. Uh, I, I personally have a problem voting for ordinance that says the fees would likely be added to delinquent bills older than four years. To me, it seems like it would be very simple to, to make that a, an absolute, uh, and that the Treasurer's Office will be as uniform as possible. Uh, so for me personally, I mean, I'm all in favor of it. I mean, if, if there are delinquent tax collections, adding the twenty, twenty percent to that is, to me, is not an issue. Uh, but before I can support an ordinance, I mean, to me, words like likely be added and as uniform as possible are not things that should be included in Smith County ordinance.
Ordinance.
Or the supervisor ordinance. Uh, and I don't know, I wasn't in the meeting, I mean, if, if Mr. Burke had has given reasons why there can't be more clarification on those two items, I mean, I'm not aware of any, but, but I for one would like to see that corrected. Uh, this isn't a guessing game. I mean, it should be very simple.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Mr. Call and also Mr. Atkins were in that meeting, and we did have a pretty in-depth discussion about it. I think Mr. Burke's feelings were sometimes it might have been put some funding hardship, and sometimes there had to be some discretion in his thoughts. I don't know, Charlie and Loska have anything to clarify?
Yeah, I was, if, Mr. Chairman? I was going to comment that he made a, sometimes the actual taxpayers, things are, sometimes he has to do it before the four years is up, you know, 'cause we were looking at setting a four-year limit. And sometimes to get things settled, it needs to be done a little earlier. And, uh, he, it, when in all possible, he waits the four years, but when he has to do it early for whatever reason, he would like to still be able to apply the, the cost. And he says it's very, very seldom and very rare, but it does occur.
Aren't we opening ourselves up for an issue if, if it's not uniform? I mean, every citizen in this county should be treated equally.
Treated equally.
I get that.
Well, every citizen should have a chance to pay equally, too.
Is, is, is this, and I don't mean to interrupt, but is this the, um, so this is like a committee recommendation, but this wouldn't be the ordinance itself. Is that correct? Would the ordinance not be printed up separately and differently? Is this, I mean, this is just saying, explain that the fees would likely be added to whatever, whatever, and, but it's going into how it would be done, but that's not, doesn't the ordinance go in the ordinance book?
We had a copy of the ordinance at the public hearing.
So that, well, does it say the same thing in the, in the...
Mr. Chairman, even in the ordinance, there was some ambiguity, 'cause the concern was, I mean, I'm not saying anybody would be treated differently, but you know, if, if we're going to adopt the ordinance, there should be some specifics in there to ensure that the residents of Smith County are treated equally, no matter where you live, what the property is, what your personal situation is, who you're friends with, and that stuff. And ordinance needs to be specific.
Mr. Chairman, I agree.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we've had a poll made with members serving on this board who were in extreme delinquents on their personal property, like the property taxes, which I found really interesting with this board didn't address, that, that's true, everybody should be treated equally.
So I, I for one am not in favor of it because of the ambiguity in it from the Treasurer's Office. I mean, I, I mean, and if, if everybody has different situations, and there's got to be a way legally to write that so that if anybody in, in the county picks up the ordinance and reads it, they know where they fall. To me, it's just, you know, there's two...
Well, and...
We dealt with a situation like a couple of years ago, when there was an election, we dealt with some issues where some people were involved in some things.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's just, there, there needs to be specifics to protect the citizens of Smith County and anyone who, because there are people in Smith County who will play politics. And that shouldn't be allowed, and then our citizens shouldn't be subjected to that.
Well, this, this is a committee recommendation. I get the discussion. I, I have to say I agree with that statement. So, um, we can vote on this, and then if we need to...
Mr. Chairman, that, that's the notice for the public...
And I got my glasses on still.
For our chairman, first.
For our chairman. That hall is so much better.
So that's, that's what the advertisement was for the public hearing at your last meeting. Mr. Campbell, I, I feel like I'm putting you in the pan all night. I'm not, but you understand how it goes from that to an ordinance.
Oh, very much so. And I'll, I'll say that, you know, we've advertised, had a committee meeting. I, I have not been asked by this full board to review the ordinance that was presented to the ordinance committee. That was brought by the Treasurer's, at best my recollection. And, uh, the full board has not asked me to review that or provide input to you with respect to its efficacy. Uh, I think Mr. Blevins's comments are well-taken. There are some constitutional, uh, underpinnings that require taxation to be levied in a uniform manner, uh, and there are certainly, um, the language might well need to be tightened up. Having said that, again, I've not been asked by this board to weigh in on it, um, other than just to approve the, ever text the advertisement, which I've not.
Reading what he's got up here right now, anybody that's, that feels paid the amount due within thirty days after the delinquent notice, and that's the key, is the delinquent notice is mailed, they're subject to a twenty percent penalty.
Yeah, and, in all due respect, I, I agree with that, but the problem is, when is that delinquent notice granted? And is it being consistent?
In uniform.
In uniform. So like I said, I'm totally in favor of, of adding the fee. Uh, I, I can't vote for this. I mean, I need to see it right.
What?
I need to make sure, I mean, for me personally, there, there needs to not be any loopholes that people can play, that things can happen. Cars crack, scenes are always happening.
If you're, if you're open, then I, I will, I will go ahead with this committee recommendation. If, if, if it passes, it passes, of course, but if, if it doesn't, and then I would be open to a, a new motion to...
Yeah.
To send to have that...
Specifics.
Add the specifics and, and have legal counsel maybe, uh, okay. Well, that is a committee recommendation. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
I think it needs to be clarified. Even though I was sitting in there, I didn't think that that was the ordinance that it, that we were just talking about to get going, but I, I agree, it needs to be clarified.
And that's not the ordinance, but before I, um, before I can support it, I need to see the ordinance. So to me, that needs to be developed, and the attorney has to look at it, make sure it fits that uniform, uniformality code, uh, so that all the citizens of Smith County are, are treated fairly.
You'll make that form of a motion?
Yeah, we can, we can do it again.
I would make that a motion to send that back to the ordinance committee to actually develop the actual ordinance with council's input to make sure that we have a code that can be enforced evenly across Smith County.
There's a motion on the table.
Second.
And a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Now, Mr. Campbell, if you want to, Ms. Wyatt said if you wanted to talk about the noise ordinance, I suppose?
I'd be happy to, uh, Mr. Chairman. For members of the committee that were not, uh, involved in that ordinance committee meeting, by way of background, you were... by way of background, you recall that there was a lady that came to the board, I think, two months ago, levying a noise complaint. And she was concerned about what law was available to enforce noise issues. The administrator contacted me and asked me to review the existing noise ordinance and to give them, give the ordinance committee an opinion with respect to its efficacy, whether or not it can be enforced. And the ordinance is on the books right now in Smith County, mimics an old ordinance. It was developed out of Virginia Beach. And in 2009, the Virginia Supreme Court ruled that that ordinance was unconstitutional and that it failed to provide fair warning to potential violators of it as to the level of noise required to unfail of it. Given the fact that the existing ordinance in Smith County greatly mimicked that of what was in Virginia Beach at the time, became the position of the Commonwealth Attorney, that he felt that that was an unenforceable ordinance and would not prosecute any violations of it. So the state of the law has not changed. It's certainly still the ordinance here existing in Smith County. Virginia Beach has, in fact, developed a new ordinance that would incorporate certain levels of sound as measured by decibel meters. And that ordinance has not yet been challenged to in appellate court. But as far as I know, that ordinance certainly would appear to meet constitutional criteria. And the city of Virginia Beach spent a lot of money with a lot of legal expertise to try to develop that. But as it sits now, the state of the law in Smith County, the current noise ordinance would be deemed to be unenforceable and unconstitutional according to the Commonwealth Attorney. And there would need to be some amendments to that ordinance if, in fact, you wish to try to enforce that. That was the opinion that was given to the ordinance committee.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yeah, well, yeah.
I mean, and I would assume any, I mean, I think radar guns have to be calibrated every so often. I'm assuming if there was anything measuring decibels, that they would have to be calibrated every so often to certify that they're accurate.
Yeah, there's a whole industry out there that would, you know, provide this type of service. Ultimately, the localities, they would sell the decibel meters themselves and periodically calibrate them and provide certifications with respect to the same so that you could use them as evidence in court.
But, I mean, there's billions of apps you can download, but an app on my phone wouldn't be calibrated or?
Well, I won't say it wouldn't be calibrated. It would be difficult, well, it would be admissible in court without a foundational witness to testify to its accuracy at the time in which it was used to measure that sound. And so without that, you know, it would have no utility whatsoever. And obviously, there is a underlying cost consideration to the county in terms of having to outfit enforcement with these decibel meters and pay for the cost of calibration and maintenance and same.
And certification. And there's also a cost of enforcement.
True.
Well, this was just saying, I guess, came out of committee is to allow the committee to review the information given and discuss in a future meeting. So is that just kind of an FYI kind of a situation? And then if the ordinance committee wants to bring it back up? Or does the county wait until it comes back up? And if there's a push, or it could come up now, I guess, whatever the board's pleasure. But to pursue?
Mr. Chairman, if you're looking at me, and I feel like you are.
Well, I'm just talking out loud, Michael. I guess I'm just thinking that the committee's not making a recommendation to do anything with it, so.
It's my understanding that it's under study.
Yeah, just leave it under study, and then?
It's also under advisement as samples have been provided to the committee for future consideration.
Does that suit the committee? I mean, that's what you guys, okay. All right, thank you very much. Do I have anything else on timeframe? I got to get to the mic. Seven o'clock, Peggy Hurley with the U.S. Census Bureau presentation. Hey, welcome.
How are you?
Good, thank you. Sure.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. My name is Peggy Hurley, statistic specialist with the Census Bureau, serving here in the county currently. And I'm here to talk to you tonight about what impact the 2020 census will have on your local community and some changes that we are having in the 2020 census and how we can be proactive to maybe offset some of the changes and how to handle that outcome for that. So just to give you a little bit of information on the census, which I'm sure most of you already know, the census is U.S. constituted, mandated, or formally taken to. The information is used with proportions based on U.S. House numbers. And it will also be used to record the registered income at federal, state, and local levels. The very, very important part is this census, will population numbers for your area will impact how much of $675 billion will be distributed between the nation, all states in the nation? And these numbers will impact how much of that money comes to your local area. The information is also used for statistical purposes, for grants that we are currently running in the local area. And it's also used to help us plan for the future. So we have lots of, lots of, lots of things that census information is used for here locally. Just to give you a little bit of information about, you know, what our goals are here at the census for the 2020 census. And, you know, our goal is to definitely count everyone once, only once, and come in the right place. And in order to do that, we have really got to do a lot of work. We are using the same design as we used in 2010 in the 2020 census. It seemed to work very well. However, because of the changes of the survey going online, we are going to have some obstacles over time. Being from Southwest Virginia, taking a look at what it used to look like 15 years ago to looking at it now, or even what it looked like in 2010, what it looks like now. We've had an extreme decline in population in Southwest Virginia. So if you take a look at those declining numbers that we have, and then you also take a look at the changes in the census look at going online, if we're not proactive to ensure that citizens have the ability, you know, to use computers, to have access to use the computers, have assistance to use the computers, and also have Wi-Fi, you know, those two numbers, if they turn out negative, can make our numbers look very different in 2010 than they did in 2020 and they did in 2010. When I look at one, there's a system that we use to look at the non-response numbers for Smith County, are your largest non-responses other than sugar growth area? We have a long line of people who are in that area. The good thing that we have thrown in the force is I've already met with federal towns within Smith County. Salt Hole, Smear, has been absolutely wonderful. They've already created a complete count committee for the town. They've already done several activities with the count committee. They have some important people sitting on that committee. If you'll take a look at inside the book, the folder that I gave you, there's a book. On page 11 of that book, is it able of what a complete count committee looks like? This isn't a manual. This does not mean that when I was coming to you today and asking you to form a count committee for the town, it does not mean this is what it has to look like. This is just an example. What your count committee should look like for the area to serve in the 2020 census should be what's important to your community, who's important, who's already out there doing a wonderful job already. Who's going to put some information in the hands of, that's going to be able to get it into the lives of our citizens. During this time right now, the Census Bureau is in what we call educational phase. The municipal road is through December 31st of this year. And what our goals for the county committees and our goals here at the census is is to educate local citizens on why the census is important to you. How does this impact their homes? How does this impact their jobs? How does this impact the future of the companies that they work for? What can we do to make the outcome of this census better that will help our community grow? So, you know, to be honest, I can remember in 2010 when the numerator kept knocking on my door. And that's what everybody, when you say census, I say to everybody, "That's the numerator?" I know, I did it again, I don't know if you can see it going. We want to ensure that all of our citizens know who these, why they're there. But it is important, and we have a whole lot of work to do. I have that with Ohio presented for their town council. And they are going to be named the first four, four account committees as well. We have now met with Peter Carter, so we are hoping that we can get a county meeting in this area. Very familiar with your area. I worked for the Virginia Employment Commission here for about five and a half years here in Mary. I would say some target areas for us to reach out to would definitely be your low-income housing in the area. I know that you have a lot of it. And, you know, those numbers, homeless population numbers, look very different here in Southwest Virginia than they look across other areas. You're down the road, and you can see homeless people. Here, you don't see them. Here, you have two, three, or four families in home. How do we enjoy this folks that, you know, this information is not being seen to their person who does their lease, how can we enjoy it? We're getting all the numbers of the folks that are in that home. We have a lot more people here in Smith County than Whole County. So that is one of the important things. We're also trying to reach out to schools. The school will be very important. In some areas, we already have some things up and running. I know that Mrs. Frye in Salt Hole, Salt Hole little meter, she is going to do a mock 15 theme with her kickrakers. And at the time of education on what the census is, hoping they'll carry this information home to their parents. So we really have a lot of work to do here. We have a lot of hiring that's going on. There will be one of me in Everett County in the state. They'll be a partnership specialist in Everett County. However, I'm not real sure on how long that hiring is going to take, but the jobs are on the USA website now. I wanted to ensure that Southwest Virginia got the representation that we need and that we're ahead of the game. But there will be one of me here. So, you know, we need people to apply. We're going to be hiring address canvassing folks, and that hiring is going on right now. These jobs will be for people that will be responsible for taking the 2010 address listing that we have. And they will drive from street to street, and they will update new addresses, take away the old addresses. And if we have any questions about an address, they'll also try to get information about those questions. And then we'll move on to our accountant group quarters. Group quarters is very important also to your area. We have a prison here. You know, we have got the Southwest Virginia Health Institution here. So group quarters is going to be very important to you parents in the county. So we're going to be hiring folks for that. And then, of course, we'll be hiring what everybody's familiar with is the numerators. A couple of months ago, we needed about 30 to 40 applicants here in Smith County. And right now, we need about 130 to 140 applicants in Smith County. We need a large pool. And right now, we don't have, you know, we don't have that many numbers. So we need places to set up for job fakers, you know, places to be able to get this information out. Things like your senior citizens event in Chillicothe, you know, went to that. Your free health clinic, I've been trying to get information now through that population. That's going to be very important. But we've got lots of work to do here. So the idea of a complete count committee would be to have these people like the free health clinic, the library, your school or superintendent, folks like that that can get this information into the hands of lots and lots of folks on the committee. And I always get the question, "When do we need this meeting?" And the real answer is, we need to do it six months ago. So, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and I'm very sure if you're going to do it yet. The survey will go live on March 1st. And people can actually start going online to complete the survey at that point. There is a couple of additional ways to complete the census. They can still do paper application, and they can also go in 1-800, and follow you. But we have to keep in mind that due to budget cuts, we only have two data centers in the nation where we have many, many more for. And then the 1-800 number, again, I worked for the Virginia Employment Commission during the recession, and that queue could only take so many people. And then what happens? It gets fuller, and then those calls don't get through. So we need to ensure that everyone here in Smith County has an opportunity to get online and be able to complete the census. And that's going to take a lot of work and a lot of being creative. So that's kind of where we're at now. Our motivation base is trying to get people, you know, to engage in the census. We'll start January 1st, or January 3rd, March 1st. You know, if people have a sense of security, they need to complete it and ensure that they do. Another, another area that the county is missing on that's getting a low response rate is counting our youth, which is our children agency or the file. For whatever reason, people don't include their small children on their census. So we've got a lot of work to do. Maybe as well, you know, where do we find these little kids? I do know that Smith County has quite a few daycare options. I know when I moved to the area in 2010, it was a saving for me. So, you know, we need to ensure that we get to all of them, and ensure that we get our head to our centers. We need some important people on this committee. We need someone from the police department on the committee. So whenever we're doing address canvassing or we send out numerators, people will be familiar with who they are. They're expected, you know? You know, they know how to identify if I show up at your door, how they can look at my badge, and there's a number on there, and they can call and verify this is a true census worker and not someone just trying to take my information. So the police department would be a good person to have on the committee. If you want to answer for the police, sometimes you have to put a fire department. That might be something you consider. But that's kind of where we're at. That's kind of what we have going on. We could really use your help, you know, to make sure everyone's counted and it's within the county and anything that we can do to assist. If you're interested in a complete count committee, the next steps would be identifying who you would like to have on that committee and setting a date for us to come in and do some training for the committee. I would, you know, I would think, and I'll try to tell them, but they may be a little overwhelmed. You know, I try to tell them, "I'll think of how to include, not add to." So who's your rock stars in the county? Who's already doing great work? Who's in your faith-based community? You know, if you have a pastor or a day, is really touching on what goes, that would be something great to have on the committee. Those are the people I'm contacting. Does anybody have any questions?
Time for you to tell her you're a rock star.
Yeah, come on.
As days I'd like to forget.
I have to say, just had to talk to Smith County. I mean, when me and my father came here in 2010, I came here with a high school diploma and three small kids. And this county gives them their opportunities. I was able to get daycare, which I couldn't get in the county I was from before. I went back and got a master's degree. And there's some awesome people here in this community, and it really helped us. I'm not without, you know, reaching out and making sure the right people's in the right places so we can get things done.
Very good, very good.
So who do I follow up with? Is that you, Mr. Carter?
He's a rock star. He's been a lot of good, paying my directions.
Okay, further, yes. Okay, if there's anything that I can help you do, if you want to sit down and kind of look at fingers or?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Rich, I've been saving you.
Yes, sir.
Where do I need to go to find this? Yep. Authorization of to honorate the real estate tax, Jeff Richardson, page 26 on the additional. And if you would, Mr. Richardson, I talked to you earlier today about maybe going over the PPTRA. When you get done with this one, if you would, please.
A number of years ago, we had enterprise in for a number of years. I guess, I think back to 2007, the decision was made to take it from the economic development office to the real estate department to the law office. So at that time, we made some changes in terms of what the order. So at that time, we made some changes in terms of what the ordinance said, put some limitations on it, put some more stringent guidelines on it. And if you look at this, what we basically have is a line showing since 07, all of the companies that have applied, with the exception of one, we have one that has applied, but that has not got, has not completed all of the projects yet. I would suspect that next year, we'll have one more company. We haven't confirmed that they're going to reach the 60% threshold, but if I had to, just looking at it, anticipate that that's going to be the case. It's a program that takes property, and its objective is to take property that existing structures incentivize folks to improve them. And if you just look at this, these are the numbers of the companies. We just showed last year's 18 to 19, and as you see, after so many years, I think it's nine, that they end up paying 100% on all of it. They only receive the tax break on the differential between what the base value was at the time the application is put in, what it is when it's completed. That's what they receive the break on. If there's a change in value, do a reassessment. They also do not receive a, a tax break on that, and they do not receive a tax break on any additional structure that is added and on to it. We'll sometimes have that happen. The best example is, we have a physician's office that was an older home, a commercial piece of property. They did an absolutely fabulous job that added thousands of feet on to it. Well, they still pay full of the thousands that they added. It's been a good program. We've administered it. I don't know if yours shows it in our total value of exoneration. We looked at it. It should be $2,339.57, not 58. We've caught ourselves with a mathematical error there, and I'll let you back. Any questions?
Any questions for the board? Let's pleasure the board.
May I present?
There's a motion and a second to move forward as presented. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Yes, sir. I just had heard through the grapevine, there were some concerns with it, and I just thought that if you were coming, that that would be a nice way to...
Wait a minute.
Yes, sir.
PPTRA, I think it was back in '05, '04 or '05, can't remember which it was. I think it was '05. The General Assembly voted to freeze PPTRA at 70% rather than continue going on up to the 100% that initially was promised to the citizens of Commonwealth of Virginia. So therefore, if you look at it, all we, I remember what we did. We were trying to find and make sure we had it as accurate as we could, because once that was locked in, that was the amount you were going to get forever. So we were trying to make sure that Smith County at that time was receiving as much as we could. If you look at the second line, that is the figure that we received there for you. But what happens is, over the years, the values of the pickles fluctuate, the size of the fleet fluctuates, whatever is in the fleet fluctuates. So it's a constant moving target. So every year, we have to sit down and take, as well as we can, the assessment values of what the fleet is in Smith County, and do a calculation to try to figure it out where we can come as close to the break even point of what the percentage should be. Every jurisdiction across the state of Virginia, in all likelihood, has different percentages of PPTRA. That's why. Because the fleet, since the '04, '05, and economic growth in various areas, it's varied. If it's a faster-growing area, there's going to be more cars, so there's going to be less car tax relief. So what we basically do is, we take that base number, and then we add in if there was a, if the citizens of Smith County the previous year paid too much in, we calculate that, get that number from the treasurer's office. Then we dump that back in. The reason we do that is, the Code of Virginia specifically says that the county cannot make money off PPTRA. We have to give it back. So that's put into it. Then what we end up doing is, we look at what all the cars are under $1,000, because they get 100%. So that's a static number. Then you look at all the values of all the cars under $20,000, because that's the cap. Somebody has a $25,000 on their bill, they only get PPTRA on the first 20 after them the last five. So that's a static number. We figured that out. That leaves the remaining amount, which is between $1,000 and $1,000 to $19,990. That's the amount left in the pot, and we end up doing the calculating on that section of it, and then that's how we arrive at the magical number. The idea is to arrive as close to zero. What we generally do when we calculate it, we tend to go on the side of the county. You say, "Well, why? Are you looking out for county?" No. The reason is because that cut section says this. Let's say, for example, we give a PPTRA rate that's too low, and Smith County ends up $60,000 short, and in essence, loses $60,000. Cut section doesn't say that we get to take the 60 out the next year and balance it back up. For that reason, we're kind of edging and moving toward the county, but we're always there at a number, a percentage, where, for example, if we're at 50, we're at 51% this year, we're probably on the side of the county. If we go to 50%, we're on the side of the taxpayer. So we're always edging towards the county because we know that we can adjust that. Plus, it's a constantly moving number because we're doing evasements, we're doing supplementals. It's just, it's constantly going on, even after we did the assessment books, which I'm happy, I'll mention this to announce, the real estate books are already completed, signed, been delivered. We did that on August 9th, and the personal property books are ready. You gotta, we're just kind of waiting for some, get some vacations done, and get this going.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Jeff, I just need your expertise and please...
That's a reach, but go ahead.
No, you can do it. Okay, it says that we're showing a net profit.
Right. I don't, that's probably not a good phrasing, but go ahead.
Okay, so maybe that's... So, and then, you know, I just heard you say that we're not to make a profit. Is that correct?
Right. What it amounts to is, is when we go to the treasurer's office, we go to them, and we say, "Hey, look, last year, how much more did we end up bringing in from the taxpayers when they paid their tax bills than we should have?"
Sure.
So the word, the verbiage of it, "that profit," is not good. So what we say is, we look at that number, and we say, "Oh, okay, that we have to give back."
So is that where you come down to the rest of the narrative and say that you recommended adding $30,000 back?
Right. We put $30,000 back in because, because that was what is really owed the taxpayer. They can't make money on that. So we had to put that number back in and put it into the equation so that we could give that money back to the, to the citizens of Smith County.
I see. Because I've just had some people in the county, you know, talk about how it's gone from 52% tax relief to 51%.
If you get, if you get into eastern Virginia, there are, there are jurisdictions, 20, 25%.
Yeah. And I see where the dynamics would be as far as the value could be equal.
Right. Because it's always, it's just always changing. It's just always, it's a moving target.
Thanks.
And our, our objective is, if we had a way that we could come up and get it down on zero, we would. But you just, you just can't do it.
Right.
You might point out, some localities is down to 10 to 5 or 10% now.
Oh, yeah. You get, you know, this was really, the General Assembly saw that this was just a cost that was just going to continue to grow. Just for the board's information, I did, well, it was a couple of years ago, I did a paper one time on, on Virginia and its budget. And in one, one fiscal year, car tax relief was the third most expensive item in the line item in Virginia's state budget. And they could just see that growing, and I think they just, the General Assembly wanted to put a cap on it, but nobody wanted to kill it. So quite frankly, in '04, '05, this was their way of killing it on a slow death, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Just to clarify a point of, I think, Mr. Blavens, there's a little bit of misinformation. This decrease is not a board of supervisors' decrease. That's, that's a number that, that you and the treasurer work together to hit so that we don't end up giving, having to put more in or give more than we...
Sure. What it is, is this, and it's not, and I'll put it where it lies, the only input that the treasurer has is giving us the number. So then what we do is, we sat down, and we run the numbers, and we do the calculation. And then we come to you guys with what we consider to be a recommendation to you, and this is our recommendation, but you as a board, if you want to do it at 51, 52, 54, 49, that's a discretion for the board, because the PPTRA rate has to be established annually by the board supervisors. We make a recommendation, and our recommendation is always based on this, getting as close to zero, that's the first thing. The second thing, on a long-term basis, the county doesn't make money. Those are the two things we love.
I just wanted to clarify, because I think there was some misinformation distributed that, that it was just another way for the board to stick it to the taxpayer, and that's not the case.
I don't think anyone is sticking it to somebody. It's, as I said, it's a, it is, it would be nice and life if everything was easy.
Right.
And simple. This is one of those things that, that is, is difficult to hit a number, and we sit down every year with the objective of looking at it, saying, "Okay, how, how close can we get to the spot on zero?" Treating the county and its citizens, because what the county does is the citizens benefit, but yet also treating the citizens of the county as fairly and not having them pay any more than what they should.
Thanks, Jeff.
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to, I appreciate you coming and going over that again. I know you presented it earlier, but to tag on with Mr. Ray, I appreciate the opportunity to get factual information out there.
Sure. And any of this, this information, anyone who wants our calculations of what we have here, this is valuable information. Any, if you have a constituent who has questions, has a question about it, wants me to sit down with them, I'll go visit them, they come see me in the office. That's what we're there for, because we want people to understand the process and how we go about it.
Or board members.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
To follow up on that, I don't know that people, taxpayers, I think they're very wary right now of any type of system that's perceived as an increase, Jeff. And I think your explanation does make it clear. When I got the packet and I went through it, it wasn't totally clear to me, even though you stayed on there, they said, "To make money on."
Right. It's not a matter of us, it's, it's not only a matter of us saying we don't make money, other than the Code of Virginia says, and the General Assembly, when they wrote it, I'm sure they had in the back of their mind, "Wow, you know, we have put this in here because early counties don't see this as an opportunity."
Well, I think, you know, the one statement where it says, "If we go at 51%, we may pocket some money."
Right.
But we'll reevaluate that. I think, you know, that was...
It's a verb. I agree. But the, the whole thing about it is, we anticipate that we're going to probably maybe bring in a little bit more this year.
Yeah.
The whole idea is, if we do, next year, we got to give it back.
Well, I think that's great to...
That's a lot of it, too. We always add it back in every time we do that calculation every year.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be back, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. My bottle wasn't big enough.
Bottle, bottle ain't big enough.
And Ms. White, I, I hope that, I asked Jeff to come up for you specifically to get that...
Well, it's not just the need to...
Well, I...
No, it was your statement.
Yeah, I just...
I read it.
And I'm glad you did.
There was a lot on Facebook that just...
Misinformation, wasn't it?
Yeah, if it just goes to the source maybe first, and then we can maybe dance around negative stuff.
Well, I just think people think so much, misuse and extravagance in spending, which I would take even to the library situation, and it's just very sensitive right now to that.
Yeah. Um, let's see, where all I've got. Water and soup? Oh, I can't get Roscoe. Huh? We need, okay. Yeah, the...
We got floating?
Yeah. It was a committee recommendation, I think, if I can find it again.
PPTRA?
Yes. Um, that was during, that was a budget committee recommendation to, to, to set the PPTRA tax rate relief at 51%. That's a committee recommendation. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Consideration of deed of gift for Staley Property and Back of the Dragon Project. Ms. Woods?
If you guys will look in more, the packet, we have a copy of the deed that Mr. Staley was presenting on, Mr. Carter, to consider for the land that's named for the Back of the Dragon project, and it's signed. I have received notification from VDOT, the CTV, to approve the resolution to name that portion, as Mr. Staley requested. So, once this is accepted by you all, we will go to the Rabelo Certification Page with VDOT to get the progress moving on that project.
Any questions? Let's pleasure the board.
We approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? I guess I could wait on Mr. Call. Consideration of Wood Grain Millworks Performance Agreement, or Agreement Extension. Mr. Carter?
Yeah, I'm here with the board, page 20, only one of your agenda. You'll see a couple of things. Wood Grain was fortunate to receive some funding a few years back. Along with that, of course, comes a certain criteria that relates specifically around investment and job creation. They have exceeded the amount in investment, but their job creation has fallen somewhat short. So in order to receive an extension, two acts have to occur. One is the Economic Development Authority has to approve the extension, and the board supervisors have to approve the extension to allow for that to continue forward. Basically, what happens is a written request is provided from the company. They have done that. They have requested up to 15 months, which is allowed through the APHID. If, if it is approved by the county, then we have to send a letter to the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, grant the extension before the performance end date, which is actually the end of this month, and it will subsequently provide their new performance date. So the EDA has already considered it at their last meeting, it came in between. They have approved the extension. I'm asking for consideration from the board supervisors tonight for your approval as well, so that we can get the wheels moving and allow Wood Grain to continue on the course.
You make that motion? Second. Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I'd just like to point out that the, from my understanding from people who work there, it's not that Wood Grain is, doesn't have the job, they just can't find people to take the job and keep it. They have, you know, they can meet this job goal right quickly if they can find people willing to come in and spend a full day working there. They say to come in and work half the day or work the break time, and they'll never see them again.
They've got the big beach signs, I call it beach signs.
I've seen the wavy signs, yeah.
So it's, it's not for lack of them trying to meet this, it's just having employees to fill the slots. So, you know, why would we not give them the chance to try to...
Absolutely. Yeah. I just hate to get hit in the public every time, first off. First thing we need is more... First thing we need is more jobs. I hear that.
At least you're good-paying jobs, too, at Wood Grain.
Um, there was a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Sorry about that.
That's fine. All those in favor? Very good. Consideration of Conner Rock Festival application.
Chairman, at your last meeting, you had a public hearing for the annual Conner Rock Festival application. I think there's penalties, there's independence. Everything's in order. Today is considerations for the approval of such application.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Consideration of updated resolution for Green Acres Evergreen Drive share. Ms. Richardson, you are gonna get to speak tonight.
I am, I am. Mr. Chairman, did you follow, I believe it was in, no, we had a session where there was a pre-application process for the Virginia Department of Transportation for revenue sharing for Green Acres Drive, Evergreen Court, and now we, part of that process was having a resolution of support from the board, and it was noted at that meeting that resolution was adopted. However, we, we did submit that pre-application and have found out this week that the wrong VDOT fiscal year was referenced in the resolution.
Uh huh.
So they have just requested us to update that resolution with revenue sharing program years, fiscal year '21, which would be 2020 through '21, and fiscal year '22, which would be 2021 through 2022. So it's just a revision to the original resolution, making that change to the VDOT fiscal year.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. I don't guess we need to reread the resolution since it's just amending it, correct? Mr. Campbell, does that work with you? If you're correcting the resolution instead of rereading it for the record, or should we?
You can simply approve the amendment.
Okay. Is that good for your motion?
I'm gonna approve the amendment.
Okay, motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Call? Water and Sewer?
I called the Water and Sewer Committee meeting, the order at 4:48 PM. Mr. Carter presented information that had been received from Mount Rogers Planning District Commission concerning the availability of grant funding for infrastructure planning and technical assistance. He informed the committee that deadline to apply was August 26th. The committee reviewed and discussed projects. Mr. Ray made a motion to recommend applying for funding for the following projects. Daywood Lane Water Meter, which is technical assistance. Atkins Small Sewer Extension, which is construction. Daywood Water Main Extension, which is construction. Water Correlator Project, which Ms. Woods informed me was a leak detector, which I had no idea what a correlator was. I'm learning every day from. Also, a water metering equipment project, which is construction funds. It was a committee recommendation.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Carter then presented a draft copy of term services agreement as shown attached that has been drafted by County Attorney Mr. Campbell. After review, Mr. Curtis made a motion, recommended adopting the term service agreement as presented. It's a committee recommendation also, Mr. Chair.
It's a committee recommendation? I'll just have to tell you right off, I've not read it all.
It's pretty lengthy.
It is.
We can have Mr. Carter read it. I withdraw that statement.
It is a committee recommendation to adopt the term services agreement as presented. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, lastly, Mr. Carter updated committee concerning a past due bill for Watson Galahad. During a previous meeting, the board supervisors, along with the committee, had agreed to waive late charges for an account for Mr. Galahad, with the understanding the balance would be satisfied. To date, the balance has not been cleared, and a lien has been placed on the property. Nothing else remaining, I adjourn the meeting at 6:22 PM.
Thank you, sir. Consideration of resolution of support for broadband initiative on page 27 of the additional agenda.
There are not a grand deal, sir.
If you would, please.
As our continuing pursuit of increasing broadband in the Virginia county, I think I've mentioned it before, along the way, that one of the first steps in getting us to, to that level is, according to the state, is to compile information and basically bring on a consultant. There are grants available for this. For this grant application that we've been working on, it's essential to have a resolution of support for the grant application to be able to begin the process with a consultant. The resolution before you tonight is part of that grant application process. And the grant itself is through the Department of Commerce, and it allows for localities to bring on consultants to compile their data, to put the data in presentable fashion, and it's kind of a step approach, you know? Once you complete the grant application, you submit it, you wait, hopefully you're successful on the award. If so, then you bring the consultant in, then begin all the work. Once that's compiled, then that gets you to a step to where you can look at other grant opportunities that fund or partially fund some of the infrastructure that goes into it. But the first step is to complete the application and bring a consultant on. They score these things. So if you've got a locality that is following those, those guidelines, you rank out. If you just, you just write a few things down on the paper, turn it in, chances are it's gonna get kicked out. So what this resolution is for is to demonstrate and support the board supervisors for the program and to basically be included in the application process, compile the data for the consultant.
Very good. Somebody wanna read that one?
I would suggest maybe Ms. Richardson, since it was pointed out that she had.
That she needed a little practice today. That, that would work fine, if you would, Ms. Richardson.
Smith County Virginia Board of Supervisors supporting Smith County's broadband initiative. Resolution, whereas reliable broadband for internet access is essential for Smith County residents, businesses, and visitors, and whereas internet connectivity is no longer luxury, but is now a requirement for community vitality, including competitive economic development, affordable and quality health care, equitable education, effective government, farming and business operations, entertainment, commerce, emergency services, and future uses yet to be developed, and whereas vast areas of Smith County, thousands of residents lack access to minimal broadband speeds of 10.1 megabytes per second down, 1 megabytes per second up, and whereas Smith County must plan and prioritize for deployment and adoption of this infrastructure, including, but not limited to, pursuing partnerships with ISP and service providers in an attempt to effectively achieve greater access to affordable broadband throughout all areas of the county, and now therefore, be it resolved, Smith County Board of Supervisors fully supports the broadband initiative and any efforts to expand and upgrade the broadband infrastructure of Smith County.
What's the pleasure of the board? I'd like to make that motion myself, but I can't. Yes.
When we mentioned, how about a consultant, do we know what, what money we're talking about with that?
Typically, the grant award is between $20,000, $20,000 and $30,000. And that's, that's, those consultants have been on board and have done it. So that typically, they do within the grant award.
Okay.
I guess they know how it's priced.
A date of what?
Just the date on the resolution.
I got a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chair, three seconds.
Curtis. Mr. Ray. And, okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
What's the status of our other, our other grant we have through East Atkins with the broadband, there's?
My understanding through the Senator's office is that that was worked out, and that it should be fairly booked.
Anything that we need to do to see some action or something?
I don't know, I don't know at this point, but I can follow up and find that.
Yeah, 'cause I, I get asked, asked that quite often, you know, what do we have, you know? I tell them, hey, we got a broadband grant. We've seen nothing.
Yeah, we, we provided the appropriate documentation for support, but I will follow up with that and have it at your next meeting.
Appreciate it. And I figure it should have.
Is this, Mr. C, the, for this, could that just be, go ahead and talk about it right now?
Is that the CIT?
Yeah.
It is.
Could that just be, since we're talking about broadbanning, could we? On the CIT, which is a broadband policy team membership and considerations, since we're on the, the cusp of talking about broadbanning, this is, this is something that, that, well, I guess it's the office now is being worked on, Mr. Carter and Kendra and Kayla, Kelly and Manuel, and, and it's, what we're looking for is to see if there's any volunteers that would like to participate in being on this, to help kind of, I don't know if you call this a spearhead necessarily, just as a, to be a part of the broadband team, is that kind of what we're looking for?
And the team is supposedly contained where you have parties of interest that, that perform certain, like recommendations, and they help drive the process. And right now, we're in the application process. Upon successful completion of that, the team will have to get together, and there's a whole list, and I, I think you may have it.
Hand that back down, 'cause that's his writing even on there. I made a, I'm about to roast, they must turn the air off in here. Staying too late.
We talked about types, calls, requests, there's a survey that has to be completed. Once, once we notify, the earlier you submit, better. There's a certain amount of money there. You don't want to get what's left, you want to get what's in front. So, you know, potential team members, economic development, planning, CIS people, IT, Sheriff's Office, finance, county attorney. Point that out, Mr. Campbell, sitting over there.
Just gotta add it to a team.
You know, and different factions of those, I'll go into putting this thing together, and you're basically composing a policy team when you do that. So what I, what I would ask, and I don't need a commitment tonight, but certainly if anyone on the board of supervisors would like to serve on that team, certainly open for that.
I think actually the post-it note that was on it was, ask for volunteers, and if not, appoint someone. So I guess being in the role I get to set as of right now, does anyone wish to volunteer? Think about it, if you want to be on that or could contribute to it, then that's something that I think it's, it's open and.
I think our areas that need it the most would be good, you know, some representation for Sugar Grove, Rich Valley, you know, the outer skirts of Atkins. You know, those areas would probably be the most served to, you know, to have some more, 'cause that's where we need to get the numbers, that's where we need to get the household count and, and dig in and do the work and figure out. 'Cause we gotta show, you know, this is an initiative, the money's gonna be there, everything's gonna be moving. We've gotta show that there's a need and that there's, that there's a demand, not only a need, but there's also the demand for it. 'Cause even if you got the households, the households, they're not showing up saying they want it.
Absolutely.
We're not gonna get, get any of those dollars. So those communities that don't have and need to be served, that, you know, it would be good.
The governor kind of put that up.
Shame Mr. Stevenson ain't here and we can't get him, or we've got.
Maybe we'll volunteer if we're not.
Yeah, or we've got, we've got a on point, you know, a member coming on that will serve the rich, the Sugar Grove area, you know, that might be a good plug in, just, just a thought.
Well, we just think about it, guys, girls, if you, if it's something that interests you or something, I guess, I, I totally agree, and I know the governor talked about broadbanning a while back, if you'd like to have it in every household, well, I represent Park, well, that's a town, they probably got broadbanning, but at my house, it's terrible.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I do think that.
It sickens me to know what kind of, I can see lines that have speeds 10 times of, of what I have at my house, even in the town of Chillicothe, and it sickens me that I just can't, you know, somehow plug into that fiber that's, I mean, it's right there, I can see it.
I could throw a rock to some of mine, too, and I can't reach it, so. Well, that's just food for thought, so if, if, I, I don't think, we ought to continue that, Mr. Carter, for, so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle, for at least even the next meeting to be all right, bring it back up as anybody thought about, but I think that's something that we need to pursue.
It'll be worth watching it, it's an appointment committee for appointment.
Yeah, I think there should be some representation, if you want my opinions, I'm sure there will be representation.
It's an appointment committee, we don't have to, we need them tomorrow, but.
I think mostly we refer to the board committee for representation for the CIT.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Lots of information on the desks tonight, I guess. That's, Kelly, did I get everything? I saw that, but I don't know, I just.
Why, why did you get it? I don't recall seeing one.
From the.
The letter from.
You got it because I got it. And it says, please alert board supervisors of such. So I'm all passing all of them, whatever it says, but that's.
I mean, we have quite a few of those in this county, why has this been special?
That's the first one I've ever seen.
I haven't seen one. I got a couple of neighbors. If you don't know, there's a website, list a bunch of them. Can we get a little, try to find out why they sent you that letter to provide to us?
Sure.
What, did it come from the department of health?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, this individual's seeking conditional release, and so the code requires, you know, the community to be notified that he's seeking conditional release. The reason you don't see them very often is because very few people ever actually get conditional release, so nobody really applies.
So do we just talk about this amongst ourselves, or do we read it out loud now? I don't know what the.
If anybody wants to request it, they can.
I guess they proposed it, right? Do we need?
They, they gave permission for it yet, they're just saying if it happens, only if his proposal resides.
Sorry, Steph, I don't know what to. Did I cover everything, Ms. Woods? All right, we're the supervisor comment, um, Ms. Wyatt?
Well, I would just like to say, I was very impressed by the presentation, President. Charles County.
County on the focus program. Um, I think that would be wonderful for our county, who's going to feel a new approach to that. It's very encouraging.
Mr. Blows?
Appreciate everybody's hard work and the love of you poor unlucky souls who stuck with us till the very end. Thank you.
Mr. Atkins?
Uh, once, I also enjoyed the focus presentation. Think we really need to pursue that here in Smith County. And, uh, everybody have a good evening.
Mr. Ray?
You know, it was, it was good to see Mr. Tyler get so much, so emotional about providing hope in a community. And, and he, he probably sees our citizens in a different light than we see him at the hospital. And to see that with the, with the Giles County program, it kind of showed a whole new light on things for me. But other than that, everybody have a safe part.
Mr. Call? Yeah, that date on August twenty-sixth for those grants kind of spurred me to remember the twenty-sixth of this month, we finally got all of our permits in line, all of our budget is set. We've got the money for the new number four salt well for Texas United Corporation. I've been after for three years. It's all in Smith County, so there'd be revenue coming. Five million dollar project, we're going to start drilling the hole the twenty-sixth of this month. It's going to give that plant another two hundred pounds of salt production per minute and last for the next thirty to thirty-five years. So.
That's great.
Whole lot of revenue taxes that's coming to the county. They're one of the best companies that's in southwest Virginia. They are. And they are already projecting well number five within the next two years. That's a good project I've been working on for a while and very proud of.
They're going to name that after you?
I don't think they'd quite go that far. They'd probably like to get rid of that.
He's going to name it the Field Well.
Yeah.
Well, that's good, Ms. Call. I, I like to see that.
It gives a total production that they can do is a thousand pounds per minute.
Wow.
Of food grade salt.
Salt well. Very good.
White Gold Man, that town said, no.
Very good. Um, uh, that's Town and County BBQ, do we meet? We'll meet before, but I guess they want RSVPs for that potentially. I will go. Charlie will go. Curtis will go. Town and County BBQ.
Well, it looks like I need another barbecue.
Come on, I'll buy.
We'll see.
Anybody?
It's more than I'm speaking.
Okay. Well, just let Kelly know that she needs to know so they can prepare. Other than that, I guess that's all I would like to say. I did, I know Phil kicked me the other night for yakking about that focus group, but now y'all see why I yakced about it. But it is really cool stuff, and I do think that we need to find that passion and person to, to lead that charge. I do think that there's a lot of infrastructure in play to make that happen. And I guess, anybody else got anything? Ms. Wyatt, and I don't mean this in an attack kind of mode at all. I hope that, that PPTRA is satisfied and I just would love to see, and I was just informed it was just a negative social media blast. So, if, if, if we could just keep the, the positive positive and, and the full story out, I, I appreciate that as just being a board member, so.
Chairman, I, I totally agree with that. However, I do think that we have a commission to provide information to the public.
Right.
And, you know, this is more conspired.
Okay. Well, and I, I'll, I'll be happy to help find the bottom, the answers if, if there's any need to find them. I just think that we, we, we get hammered with negativity all the time, and then that happens tonight and everybody just feels good. And everybody's like, man, that's what our, that's what we're supposed to be doing up here, not bickering. We're supposed to be here to, to enhance our community and the people of it, so.
I think responsible government doesn't always mean bickering.
Right.
I think that, you know, we, there are certainly some very viable issues that need to be addressed. Maybe right now, tonight, sometimes we'll get it, but I'd be glad to have a dialogue with you on it.
Absolutely.
Because even though we appoint boards, ultimately, we are the elected officials. And if there are concerns from the public, then I think we don't want to micromanage, but we do have somebody responsible for that. So, I think it's all in the spirit of just good government.
Okay. I'll be happy to. All right. Let's go. Thanks, guys and girls, for sitting in here with us tonight.